Send the King to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I say. The child, the child, sleeping in the night. He will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light. Send the King to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I say. The child, the child, sleeping in the night. He will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light. Send the King to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Pray for peace, people everywhere. Listen to what I say. The child, the child, sleeping in the night. He will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light. Angels we have heard of our sweetly singing always. And the mountains they revive, echoing our joyous praise. In Exaltis Deo! In Exaltis Deo! Come to them, where everything is new. There's a new world to be seen. There's a new life to begin. Christ our Lord and Savior. In Exaltis Deo! In Exaltis Deo! Come to them, where everything is new. There's a new world to be seen. There's a new life to begin. Christ our Lord and Savior. In Exaltis Deo! In Exaltis Deo! It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Everywhere you go, take a look at the fine attend. Listening once again, with candy pages and silver legs of gold. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Toys in every store, but the prettiest sight to see is the holly that will be on your own front door. A pair of puffy umbrellas and a pistol that shoots a wish upon a pin. A gullible talking with a couple of monkeys and a couple of clemens and pen. And Mom and Dad can hardly wait for school to start again. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Everywhere you go, there's a green grand hotel. One of the park as well, the sturdy kind that doesn't like the snow. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. Soon the bells will sound, and the thing that will make them ring is the carol that you sing right within your heart. And the thing that will make them ring is the carol that you sing right within your heart. Flashing through the snow, in a one-horse open sleigh. Oh, the girls we go, laughing all the way. There's one hop they'll bring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride in sickness way from tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And as soon as standing pride was seated by my side, the horse was mean and plain. Misfortune was his law, he got into a cryptic thing, and then he saw his love. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And as soon as standing pride was seated by my side, the horse was mean and plain. Misfortune was his law, he got into a cryptic thing, and then he saw his love. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And as soon as standing pride was seated by my side, the horse was mean and plain. Misfortune was his law, he got into a cryptic thing, and then he saw his love. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! Slay the three, I live skin. In the lane, show us lip skin. A beautiful sight, we're happy tonight. Walking in a winter wonderland. Run away is a new bird. Here to stay is a new bird. He sings a love song as we go along. Walking in a winter wonderland. In the bed, we can build a snowman. And pretend that he is box and ground. They'll say, "Are you married?" We'll say, "No, ma'am." But you can do the job you love now. When you're on, look for fire. As we dream, by the fire. The place that are fraying, the place that we made. Walking in a winter wonderland. In the bed, we can build a snowman. And pretend that he's a circus clown. We'll have lots of fun with this snowman. Until the old age is knocking down. When it's cold and you're thrilling. Though you know it's a chilling. Well, Frolic can play the Eskimo way. Walking in a winter wonderland. Well, Frolic can play the Eskimo way. Walking in a winter wonderland. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bell rock! Jingle bells swing and jingle bells ring. So when you're rowing in a bushel of fun. Now the jingle hop has begun. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle bell rock! Jingle bells shine in jingle bell time. Dancing and prancing in jingle bell square. In the frosty air. What bright time, it's the right time! To rock the night away! Jingle bell time is a swell time! To go riding in a one-horse sleigh. Giddy up, jingle horse, pick up your feet! Jingle around the park! Mix and mingle later, jingle and beat! That's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell, that's the jingle bell rock! Mary, did you know? That your baby boy? Will one day walk on water? Mary, did you know? That your baby boy? Will give sight to a blind man? Mary, did you know? That your baby boy? Will confess with his hand? Did you know? That your baby boy? Has walked where angels fly? When you kiss your little baby? You've kissed the face of God. Oh, Mary, did you know? Did you know? Did you know? The blind will see, the deaf will hear. The baby will live again. The lame will lead, the dumb will sing. The princess of the earth! Mary, did you know? That your baby boy? Is loyal of creation? Mary, did you know? That your baby boy? Will one day know the nation? Did you know? That your baby boy? Is heaven's perfect lamb? The sleeping child you're holding? Is a great time! Thank you very much.
Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. John Midendorf is the pastor at Oklahoma City First Church of the Nazarene. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Father, we are grateful today for the gift of creation. Father, we are grateful for the ideas of government and economics. That usher from your heart ways that you have organized us to care for one another, to aid and assist, to protect the vulnerable. God, we are most grateful this season for the gift of your Son. Who not only gives us a great picture of who you are, but also shows us who we can be. My best prayer for this meeting today is that we will remember the poor and the vulnerable, those who are in need of protection and assistance. But God, help us to do so against the backdrop of the love that we have from you as seen in the face of your Son. May all the decisions that we make today and all the conversations we have today bring honor and glory to your name and further your kingdom. And we have prayed all of this in your Son's name.
Pace the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I want to acknowledge our wonderful city employees who serenaded us this morning out in the hallway. I don't know how many of you showed up early enough to hear them, but they were remarkably good, aren't they? Yeah, they really are good, so we appreciate an absentia. I want to thank them for their work this morning. I also want to bring Mike McCauley up today. Mike has something he wants to show us. But last year, Mike introduced an idea to help raise money for projects that take place on the Oklahoma City River that acknowledge Oklahoma City's wonderful history. And so he has come back with a new Christmas ornament this year. And I'm going to hand the mic over to Mike and let him take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for having me back. And I promise the council, this is my last appearance of the year because I know you've seen a lot of me this year. But we started this two years ago to generate additional dollars to help support the Oklahoma City Holiday River Parade. This past year is our 10th year. But we lost a couple of major sponsors, so we looked at a creative way to generate funds to continue the river parade. So this year, Mayor, being the 125th anniversary of the founding, we tried to figure out what would depict that. So with the help of Paul Moore's Land Run Monument on the Bricktown Canal, and Carl Short taking a few photographs of the downtown skyline, and with the help of artists at MTM Recognition who did the original artwork, we came up with what we think is a fair celebration of our 125 years. But what it is, and I'll turn it and show it to the council in a second, Mayor. But what it is, of course, is the Land Run Monument done by Oklahoma artist Paul Moore with the skyline in the background again depicting 125 years of history. So these ornaments are available this weekend. They're available at the Merritt Gardens Market Shop or whatever it's called, but they'll be there at the Merritt Gardens. And you can also purchase them online. Next year, we're going to do a three-box series so you can get all three ornaments. So you can catch up, Mayor, with the series if you didn't get the first one. But the first year, the first year we did the MAPS 20th Anniversary, that was the ornament for the first year. So, and Mayor, you might show a sample of the ornament, and I'll show this to council.
I don't think our TV cameras are going to be able to pick up this, but those who'll be sitting near the front probably can. But it's an ornament that depicts the scene that Mike is showing us here. But acknowledges the 125th anniversary of the city of Oklahoma City. And it does a great job, I think, and I've only had, you know, 10 minutes to take all this in because Mike just showed it to me this morning. But it is so hard to think how far we've come, and I can't think of an illustration that more appropriately denotes the land run from 1889 all the way to the skyline, which we're so proud of today. So please pass along my compliments to the artist, and I'm sure these are going to be very popular around Oklahoma City this Christmas year. You bet. Mike, thank you. All right, and let's show our appreciation to Mike's coordination of all this work. Thanks, Mike. And the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us each month select one teacher in the Oklahoma City Public Schools throughout all of the districts that serve kids that live in the district or in the city. And we have selected this month Amber Elder of Dennis Elementary School. Amber is here right on the front row. Amber, congratulations. Let's show our appreciation. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Amber Elder has been named Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for December 2014. Whereas Amber is a first-grade teacher at James L. Dennis Elementary. And Amber graduated from Southern Nazarene University and is currently in her sixth year of teaching in the Putnam City Schools. Whereas in March 2014, Amber was named the Putnam City Schools District Teacher of the Year and was one of the 12 finalists for State Teacher of the Year. Whereas Amber believes teachers must do three things to help students realize their full potential. Create loving classroom environments, build relationships, and teach according to the specific needs of each student. Whereas Amber has a passion for helping students become lifelong learners, and she believes that each day is an opportunity to nourish growth and foster independence in her students. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that do hereby recognize and commend Amber Elder on her selection as December 2014 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. Amber, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, of course, thank you for the honor in behalf of all the teachers in our city. We appreciate and feel the support of Oklahoma City. And I just wanted to tell you, part of my inspiration of becoming a teacher is my dad. When he was a child, he was caught up in that cycle of generational poverty that we see a lot of our kids unfortunately caught up in, and it really is a cycle. And he, a teacher, saw the potential in him to become a very successful member of society. And through education, he was able to break out of that cycle of generational poverty. And now he is an innovative leader in the energy industry. And so it takes, you know, a village of people to support that, and that was my inspiration. Also, I have to say that I work for the best school district in the state, Putnam City School District. And the amount of support professionally by our administrators, principals, is out of this world. And I am honored to work for them. And especially want to thank the Putnam City Foundation and my principal and all the support that we get throughout the year, especially for the kids because they are given that chance through education to break through those cycles and be supportive and innovative leaders in our society. So thank you very much for this honor.
You're welcome, and congratulations. I can see now why you were chosen. You speak so well. Thank you. Got to get you back. Those kids are probably missing you this morning. Well, Amber is gone, but we wanted a motion to pass the... Whereas in March 2014, Amber was named the Putnam City Schools District Teacher of the Year and was one of the 12 finalists for State Teacher of the Year. Whereas Amber believes teachers must do three things to help students realize their full potential, create loving classroom environments, build relationships, and teach according to the specific needs of each student. Whereas Amber has a passion for helping students become lifelong learners, and she believes that each day is an opportunity to nourish growth and foster independence in her students. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that do hereby recognize and commend Amber Elder on her selection as December 2014 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. Amber, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to say, of course, thank you for the honor in behalf of all the teachers in our city. We appreciate and feel the support of Oklahoma City. And I just wanted to tell you, part of my inspiration of becoming a teacher is my dad. When he was a child, he was caught up in that cycle of generational poverty that we see a lot of our kids unfortunately caught up in, and it really is a cycle. And he, a teacher, saw the potential in him to become a very successful member of society, and through education, he was able to break out of that cycle of generational poverty, and now he is an innovative leader in the energy industry. And so, it takes, you know, a village of people to support that, and that was my inspiration. Also, I have to say that I work for the best school district in the state, Putnam City School District. The amount of support professionally by our administrators, principals, is out of this world, and I would, I am honored to work for them, and especially want to thank the Putnam City Foundation and my principal and all the support that we get throughout the year, especially for the kids because they are given that chance through education to break through those cycles and be supportive, supported and innovative leaders in our society. So, thank you very much for this honor.
You're welcome, and congratulations. I can see now why you were chosen. You speak so well. Thank you. Thank you, Amber. Got to get you back to, those kids are probably missing you this morning. Well, Amber is gone, but we wanted a motion to pass the resolution and honor her as Teacher of the Month, and I hope it passes. I'd be embarrassed to have to go tell her that she is not the Teacher of the Month because the resolution didn't pass council. So, let's see if it does. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right. We're on to item four of the council agendas, the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to receive the journal for December 2nd, and for B is to approve the journal for November 18th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. On to item five, it's requests for uncontested continuances. Anything, Mr. City Manager, today on uncontested continuances?
Just a couple. On page 16, under item 9H1, 9H1 on page 16, H, 1825 Northwest 14th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving on to page 17, under 9I1, item D, 1372 Kincaid Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 2105 North Lottie, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 11712 Mackel Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 3428 Northwest 22nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item Q, 3837 Southwest 27th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item T, 3233 Southwest 52nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, item W, 324 Northwest 86th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, item six is revocable permits. We have a couple of requests. The first is from the Arts Council of Oklahoma City to host opening night on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. And Peter, who you got here with you? Got a whole group, Peter DeLisi, Catherine Carter, and Lindsay, is it Peever?
It's Caitlin Carter. She's the opening night director, and then Lindsay Peever, she's our development director and the director of the finale 5K. But we just came out this morning to thank you all so much for the hard work. I really want to thank Mr. Couch and everyone in the city that has worked so diligently to help us. We've moved some things around this year. We're doing the countdown to midnight and the fireworks at Bicentennial Park, right out here in front of City Hall. And actually, City Hall is going to be a venue again this year, which is pretty wonderful, right up here. So, we're hoping that you can come and enjoy some of the festivities with us, and we really appreciate everything that the council does. I'd like to introduce Caitlin. Caitlin's the opening night director. She's going to say just a few words, please.
First of all, I'd just like to echo Peter's sentiments and thank everyone for all of their hard work, especially with all the changes that we've made this year. This year, we do have eight venues, and as Peter said, one of them is going to be City Hall. We've got 16 stages, about 25 performers, and we'd really like to see you all out there to help us ring in the new year. So, again, thank you so much, and we'll be bringing by some packets with wristbands and schedules for you all. So, thank you.
And if you'd like to kick off your New Year's resolution with a 5K, please join us at 4:00 before the festivities kickoff for the finale 5K. We'd love to see you.
All right, where should we gather for that?
Bicentennial Park.
Bicentennial Park, which is between Civic Center and City Hall on basically Walker. And so, people should come down December 31st, 5K at 4:00, and then come back after dark to welcome in 2015 and the new year. And we hope a lot of people will come. Give us an idea of typical estimates of crowds. What do you typically get?
60,000 if it's really cold and up to 75,000 when we have a nice day.
And keep in mind, in the evening, there's a lot of parking in downtown Oklahoma City.
That is right.
And I couldn't give you an exact number of whether there's 60 or 75,000 cars, but not everybody comes by themselves either.
Right.
But typically, there's enough places to park, and it is a family-friendly event, which is a little bit unusual. Most people think of a party for New Year's Eve as perhaps being something that adults might enjoy, but we encourage people to bring their kids downtown. A number of events and musical acts at different venues around the city. So, if you're new to our community, it is something that I encourage you to do, and if you've been down before, I know you're going to enjoy it again. So, thank you all for the work that you put into this for the last 12 months to get ready for another year of opening night.
Thank you so much.
We need a motion to approve the request. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. All right, and item 6A2 is a request from the Colby Foundation, and this is the Free Your Face Off 5K, which is hosted by the Oklahoma City Barons and USA Track and Field. Good morning.
Good morning. You were kind enough to approve this last year when we started it. It's a smaller party than Peter's, I'll say, but we, you may recall, this was an event we started last year that was, started out as a moment of silence at a hockey game to memorialize my son who died last year and maybe spread a little public awareness around issues related to mental illness. He suffered from paranoid schizophrenia. Thanks to that event, this has grown. It's now its own 501(c)(3), and we have some events throughout the year around town, so we are hoping that if we are lucky enough to get the kind of weather we had last year, we may have 1,000 runners this year or so. The deal is, we gather at the Cox Convention Center for the run. This year, we've changed the route for several reasons, Project 180 among them. So, we'll be going from the Cox Convention Center through Bricktown, past the police substation, up around the Health Science Center, and back to the convention center. And then participants get a ticket to that night's Barons game immediately following, and we have some opportunities for public awareness there on the concourse. We set up some tables and things, so.
What time should people show up on January 17th?
Run starts at 4:30.
And they should show up at the, on the south side of the Cox Center?
On the north side.
North side of the Cox Center.
On Sheridan.
Please, there. Okay. Thanks for this. Really appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Well, assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items.
Mayor, Craig Freeman is with us this morning, and we have audit, presentate, or we have audits on for the PPA, the MFA, Environmental Assistance Trust, and the city. Craig is going to discuss all four of those briefly at this point in time.
Okay.
However, the city clerk has advised me that if you have specific questions on each of the audits, we should wait till the proper place in the agenda to address those questions, if you have.
So, I'll go ahead and present the, just the highlights from the financial reports of each of the trusts and for the city's comprehensive annual financial report, and then I'll just stay, and so if you have questions when we get to that point in the agenda, then I'll return and answer those questions. I do want to take a second and express our appreciation to BKD, our external auditors. They provide the audit for us. It's an outside source looking at our financials to ensure the accuracy and the completeness of our financial statements. We also, Chad Moore was our engagement partner, and I want to express my appreciation to him and the work that he put in and the support that they provide with the information they give us and feedback on improvements that we can make in our financial reporting. Also, I want to recognize some of our accounting staff. We have Laura Pappas is here with, she's our controller, and then Becky Rhodes is an assistant controller, and Mark Davis is another assistant controller that we have. All of our accounting staff together put in a significant amount of time to get all of our financial statements together. We prepare 15 trust statements to the city's comprehensive annual financial report, and I really appreciate the effort and the time they put in. They're behind the scenes. We don't see their work with accountants. You don't really see their work and appreciate their work unless something goes wrong. And so, we really appreciate what they're doing to help us to accurately report our financial position, particularly from the standpoint of outside investors making decisions about investing in the city through purchasing bonds. So, it's a really important function for us, and I appreciate their work. As I go through these quickly, I'm going to go talk about net position. That's really one indicator of our financial health. It's not the only indicator, but looking at net position and the change in net position is an important factor for us to consider. The net position basically looks at your assets less your liabilities, what you have remaining. So, it's looking at all the resources that you have available, whether they're financial resources or capital resources, less the obligations that we have and what our remaining position is. And so, I'll start with each of the trusts individually, and all of those trusts we'll talk about today roll up into the city's comprehensive financial report, and so I'll give an overview of that last. One thing I did want to note is you also have the A133 audit included in your packet with the city's comprehensive annual financial report, and that contains the audit of the financial programs, the financial grants, or the grant programs for the federal and state grants, and so that's incorporated. The findings from the audit are incorporated in the back of that document. So, they're listed in the back of the document. The findings, for the most part, the findings that we see this year are related to the accounting treatment of specific financial transactions and adjustments to those treatments. And so, all of those changes that were identified have been recorded in the financial statements, but most of those are related to those particular treatments, accounting treatments of those financial transactions. So, all of those have been reviewed with the audit committee and with the city, and with the external auditors. Looking at the MFA, as we talk about the net position of the MFA, basically, the Municipal Facilities Authority provides, is a source for us to provide services for city operations. The two largest funds that we have within the MFA are our health insurance fund, providing the health insurance for our city employees. The various city funds pay into that trust to manage our health insurance for city employees. We also have the workers' compensation fund that's managed there. There's other services like the nuisance abatement program. We have IT system purchases as well as maintenance that's included in there, and our advanced funding for the geo-bond program, advanced funding for architectural and engineering services for geo-bond projects. That's just some of the services that are there. The largest two are the health insurance and workers' compensation. Overall, the net position is $43.4 million. This is a slight decrease, a very slight decrease from the adjusted position. Last year, the decrease is about $178,000. And again, since these aren't representing specific operations, it doesn't capture all of the costs of programs, like for instance, the health insurance program is really providing the operations for the city and for the water utility trust and for the airport trust for the operations of all the services of the city. So, it's not just one operation specifically, but it's services supporting those operations. It's a strong financial position. The two primary funds, if you look at what we call the risk management portion of the workers', of the Municipal Facilities Authority, the increase in net position in those areas is $700,000. And so, it's a strong position for us overall, good report for the MFA. Moving to the Public Property Authority, the net position of the Public Property Authority is $95.4 million. That is a decrease from last year of about $4 million. Most of the decrease is related to depreciation and capital assets. The Public Property Authority provides really for financing, for properties, for city properties, as well as finance, or operations for various properties. And when we look at it, the two areas, even though we have a positive net position of $95 million, there's two areas, there's two funds within the operation, within the trust, that have a negative net position or negative net assets. And the negative net position is seen in the golf courses, for one, and that's about $1.5 million, and that's related to, first of all, having an amount of debt that we have for the improvements on the golf courses. So, that debt has a negative effect on the net position, but then also having a tight operating position, that we don't have significant resources that we've been able to build up for reserves for other purposes within that operation. This isn't unusual nationally for golf courses to have challenges. We've seen golf rounds decreasing nationally, and we've seen that effect here locally as well. So, it puts us in a tight operating position. It's not unusual for the city. The city has actually supported the golf system through a transfer for water utilities for many years, and so that's something that's continuing on. But the decrease in rounds and revenues has made this more of a challenge. It's something the Golf Commission is aware of and paying attention to. Staff is meeting with the Golf Commission actually this week to have a review of the position, and it's something for us to continue to monitor. It doesn't mean they're out of cash. They still have the cash to operate, but it's something for us to monitor in looking at that system going forward. The other area that we have that has a negative net position is in the fairgrounds. And this is a little bit different from golf because it doesn't contain the full operations of the fairgrounds. The Oklahoma City Fairgrounds, Inc. actually operates the fair, so those operations are outside of the city or any city trust, but it does help to pay for improvements at the fairgrounds that are bond-funded and then those bonds repaid with the hotel tax that is dedicated to improvements at the fairgrounds. So, the fact that we have this debt and we don't have the operations there puts us in a negative net position. In addition to that, there's other improvements that we've made through the MAPS programs, either MAPS 1 or also that are coming on with MAPS 3. Well, those are cash-funded assets. Those assets are actually in the city's books, in the city's financial statements. So, if you took those assets and put those into the Public Property Authority, it would offset that by, that negative net position by a long ways. And so, that area is not as much of a concern. It's just a matter of the fact that that's a financial mechanism for us to fund those projects, those improvements. Moving on to the O seat, the Environmental Assistance Trust, the net position is a positive $29.9 million. This is an improvement of $4 million from last year. The continued improvement in the financial position in O seat is really a strategic effort by the Utilities Department staff to ensure that we have the financial resources available to continue to provide services. We set the rates in the proper level, and we're holding reserves for rate stabilization, for capital improvements, and for just operating reserves. And so, that's put us in a positive position there, strong position, and that's something that's a credit to the Utilities Department staff and their work. So, now moving on to the city's comprehensive annual financial report. The three trusts that we looked at, because you all set, the council sits then as the board of each one of those individual trusts, even though they're separate legal entities, their financials are recorded as a part of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. So, even with the incorporating those financial statements, having those included with the city operations, we have a positive net position in the city of $2.1 billion, and this is an increase of $112 million from last year. Our total assets increased by $163 million, and this is primarily due to the fact that we had a larger bond sale this year to provide additional proceeds, and then we had MAPS funds with MAPS 3 that are still coming into the city operations but aren't being expended. They're starting to be expended but not fully expended yet on the project, so they're building for reserves to fund future capital projects. Another area that we can look at to give us an indication of financial position is our fund balance in our governmental funds, and the governmental funds provide for the operations of the services that we see day to day. And the ending fund balance, and this is a, the ending fund balance that we have for the governmental funds is $991 million, and this is an increase of $132 million. Out of that $991 million, only $105 million of that is unassigned. So, all of the remainder of that is committed to other types of projects or reserved for capital improvements, like I talked about before with the general obligation bond program and with the MAPS program. The largest governmental fund that we have is our general fund, provides for the majority of our police and fire services and street maintenance, other services that you see day to day. That, the fund balance, the GAAP basis fund balance, and that's generally accepted accounting principles, the GAAP basis fund balance for the general fund is $130 million, and $120 million of that is unassigned. The budgetary basis fund balance, and I only mention this because that's what we track our target that you all have set through our financial policies for the fund balances that we hold in reserve within the general fund. We track that on a budgetary basis, which is closer to a cash basis, is about $71 million, and that is, when we look at the unbudgeted reserves, which, you know, we set a target of 8% to 15% of unbudgeted reserves, it's a little bit over that at about 16.5% on the year. So, very strong financial position for the city overall. One other area that I wanted to mention is in our fiduciary funds, which is our retirement, our city retirement system, the COPA retirement system, and then our other post-employment benefits trust. The total assets there are $700 million. It's an increase of a little over $90 million from last year, and most of that's from investment earnings. And so, it's very positive position for us there. The one area that we need to continue to focus on, our employee retirement system is 101% funded, very different from most pension systems that you see around the country. One area that we've started to focus on in the past several years is post-employment benefits, which is health benefits that we provide for retirees. And in the past, we treated that as a pay, on a pay-as-you-go basis, and we still do that. We've been paying in a little bit extra on that to help provide for those benefits. That's only about 6% funded, and it's something that we've got to continue to work on reducing that liability. One of the first steps the city council made was in working towards getting retirees to the place where they're paying 50% of the cost of the health insurance, and this year, starting January of '15, will be, I think, at 58 and 42% will be the split. And so, continuing to work towards that helps to reduce that long-term liability for us, but it's something that we'll have to continue to make some adjustments on the plan and with eligibility and other things like that going forward to help address that liability. Overall, when you look at it, though, our financial statements, city's in a very strong position. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions as we get to the point in the... And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions as we get to the point in the docket where you have that on your agenda.
Okay. Questions for Craig?
Just a comment, Your Honor. Craig, the compliments need to go to you as well as the other members of the Accounting Department, and I believe that a strong financial position, the integrity that the city of Oklahoma City has with respect to its financial operations really begins at the top with the mayor and the city manager.
Absolutely.
And down through your office and all members of the Accounting Department. You know, without these good reports, at least in the private sectors, we see interest rates within the business community ranging from 2%, sometimes even more, when they are having difficulties generating sound financial statements. And so, if we apply that to the city of Oklahoma City, we're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by putting together such a strong accounting report and financial statement. So, just commending you and the Accounting Department for really a great job again.
And it's also a reflection, like you say, throughout the entire city with financial management. There's financial management staff within virtually every city department, and their work on this is definitely a credit to that as well.
Yes.
And the council, too, for not taking fund balance and putting it into operational expenses and doing things and following the good practices as we go forward.
I think you're right. And what you said initially, that leadership that we have here, and when I talk to counterparts in other cities and talk about how our council works and the decisions that you all make, they definitely are envious.
I really do think, in our situation, it saves hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars each year, just in our very good interest rates that we're able to achieve out in the bond market. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the MFA? We do not. How about a motion and a second, then? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, three items.
Second.
Second, all right. Comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. There are four items.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Would you like to say something to the individual considerations?
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, I have a question on 7C2.
A point on 7AC, if that's not what you're talking about. Okay.
And Mayor, I have 7H and 7I.
All right, Pat, you want to get us started with C2?
C2 is a project that has a resolution authorizing the purchase of snow removal equipment from the state contract, and I don't have to stress again my feelings about state contracts, but is this new snow removal or just augment the additional snow removal stuff we have already?
So, currently, we don't have a plan to, we aren't required to make any replacements. It would just be replacement of equipment is what we'd be looking at, and we don't know of a specific project where we need to make the purchase, we just need to want to make this contract available to us in the event that we need to.
And there's no additional snow removal equipment associated with this project?
No, not at this point.
The other question I have is a minor question. It shows the expenses retroactive November 18th of 2014 through November 17th of 2015. Does this in any way obligate the council in the upcoming fiscal year?
No, it does not. There's no obligation to it, it just makes the contract available to us to use.
All right, David, item AC.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to point out the fact that we're allowing the graphic image of the Skydance Bridge to be combined with the image of our AAA baseball team, the Oklahoma City Dodgers, which I think is really very innovative. They've also adopted parts of the brick wall to the Bricktown Ballpark in their images and advertising, so I think, I'm really pleased with the way they've started out here in Oklahoma City and looking forward to continued success with the Dodgers brand. And I know there's a little bit of, perhaps not full support of adopting the name, the Dodgers, initially, but the way they're tying it back to Oklahoma City, I think, is very unique, and, again, I'm looking to the beginning of this year's or the upcoming baseball season. Thank you.
Meg, item HNI.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Are we going to speak about the ASPCA Rachel Ray grant?
Bob, Tina, you're going to do a presentation on that?
Because I thought Bob was going to do a presentation on that, I wanted to recognize the great effort, Bob.
I'd like to just talk briefly about the Rachel Ray Challenge. Back in February, council approved animal welfare participating in this agreement and this challenge. I'd also like to recognize John Gary, he's our acting superintendent and some of his staff in the back. If y'all stand up. Thanks. They worked really hard on this, and as I go through this, you'll see that even though monetarily, we didn't do as well as we thought we might, but they really, they really worked hard, and it was really a good deal for us. Basically, the challenge, the organization set a goal of 230 additional adoptions over the June, July, August period last year. And they divided it up into, there were 50 participants, 10 divisions. And additionally, they had a photo challenge, so this picture that you see here was a runner-up in that challenge, it got us an additional $1,000. And if you look in the top right, you can see another leg and a foot, so there's actually another kid in that pile. So, it was submitted anonymously in our name, and we appreciate that, gave us another $1,000. I'll run through kind of the way it was set up. As I said, there were 50 contestants, this is across the nation, this is nationwide, it's both public shelters, private shelters, nonprofit shelters. We're in a division of an intake of over 11,000 animals a year. To, basically, what we did, we finished fifth overall out of 50. We finished fourth in our division, and it was kind of like being in the Western Conference of the NBA. Everybody in that division was pretty good, so we didn't, we didn't win, didn't get as much money, but we actually exceeded our target of, by 330 adoptable animals in that three-month period. And overall, we saved the third-most lives of all the 50 contestants in that challenge. So, it was really, they really worked hard. We did 22 adoption events and participated in adoption events in that three-month period to adopt them. As you can see from there, we used a theme of rock star, so every month was a different decade of rock stars, and if you adopted an animal, you got a certificate that showed that you'd adopted a rock star. And a couple of things that came out of it, in that three-month period, we were able to improve our live release rate from 50% to 65%, which is, I mean, that's a big jump in those three months. We're actually holding pretty steady right now at about 68%, so we're well, we're moving towards our target, our ultimate target. Something else that we accomplished there is, in the month of August, we adopted 946 animals from the shelter. That's over 31 animals a day, so kind of gives you an idea of how hard the staff was working to get that done. And then this last slide just shows, there's John and his staff there. The, while we didn't get that as much money as we'd hoped, it did allow the staff to really get out in the community, and we built a lot of relationships. You know, we probably made contacts with some people that will be foster, will foster animals for us in the future. PetSmart was an active partner in this. We also, there's a McDonald's at Northwest Highway and Council, and they offered to host our first, our opening night function, so that was, that was kind of nice. The local media, you know, they were really supportive, put a lot of things out for us, and Kristi and her office put a lot of advertisement for us. So, overall, it was really a good, it was a successful thing. As always, we appreciate the council's support, because it's a hard job out there, and, you know, everything you guys can do for us to make it better, we appreciate that. If anybody has any questions, I can.
This is fabulous. My congratulations for everyone. Nice to see a reward for hard work.
We appreciate that.
And that's, yeah, just a compliment. It's not a ton of money, but it's $6,000 more than we had before. And a bunch of pets that we.
Well, it allows us just to promote the concept of adoption, though, and I think, you know, that is going to remind people that, you know, your first choice for adopting a pet is, should be the Oklahoma City Animal Shelter.
Right. And Bob, I'd like to commend you and your staff as well, because to see such a dramatic improvement in the live adoption rate is really very heartwarming, and we're looking forward to a continued growth in that area. And also compliment your staff, because I was seeing where they would be out well past midnight at times with some of their events, trying to get as many animals adopted as possible through the various social media. So, thank you to you and your staff for this effort.
Appreciate that. Yeah, for some reason, the young people like to come out after midnight and look at shop for animals. That's okay with us. Whatever we can do.
All right, Bob, thank you. And Meg, you wanted to mention.
I did, I just wanted to mention item 7I as well, which is a resolution authorizing you to execute a National Register nomination report for the Oklahoma City Memorial. And I think that's really important. It's, you know, such a unique national treasure, and I think when the documents were originally signed by President Clinton, it was placed on the register, but the nomination was never done. And so, this document will provide a ton of history for folks going forward, just to continue to make sure that this special place stays relevant.
Yeah.
That's very important. And if I could, I did want to just mention one other thing, since we were on the subject of accounting. David, you may have wanted to talk about this as well, but I think we should compliment our city auditor's office. There was a peer review from the, it's called the Association of Local Government Auditors, and I guess every couple of years, they come in and do a peer review of our city, and we were very highly recognized by that team. And so, Jim's office does a great job helping us with management issues, and we appreciate it.
And, yes, Meg, I did get to meet with the lead auditor during their time here, and they were very complimentary. Jim's office does a tremendous job, not just assisting with the external audit and keeping track of the financial numbers, but they perform what I'm going to refer to as management audits to see where we can improve our services to the public, and they have been responsible for some significant changes just in the last three years that I've been here on the council. And his office is very important to the success the city's having with its growth and its improvement in efficiency. So, again, my compliments to Jim and his staff as well.
All right, let's vote the consent docket. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Move on to the concurrence docket. Any comments here from council? We're out, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And that moves us on to item nine, and these are items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 7. The address is 1901 East Reno Avenue. It's currently I-2 moderate industrial, and it would become an I-1 light industrial district. And it looks like, John, we have one person that has signed up to speak.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we hear from the applicant and then to the person who has signed up?
Okay. Is the applicant here on this side, and this is 9A1? All right, looks like the applicant's not here. David, you signed up to speak. Yeah, come on up.
Thanks for allowing me to make this brief presentation. May be a little bit more brief than usual because my voice may leave. So, anyway, I've got some pictures that I want to pass around.
Okay, you know, just maybe I should kind of set the stage here for council. Isn't this a request to build a hotel?
Yes.
On Reno?
Yes.
So, it requires a rezoning, so just so the council will have some idea of what we're talking about here.
Right.
A request to build a hotel near MLK and Reno.
Yes, and we operate the largest shredding facility in Oklahoma and the largest in the world, and we're heavy industrial, and for the reasons I'll explain to you, it's not a good idea for this motel to be located where they want to locate it. So, very briefly, you can scan through these pictures real quickly and see what kind of an operation Durishburg has. These are gigantic machines, and they're located just to the north and to the west of the proposed location. Next, as soon as you scan through these pictures, and it won't take long to do it, I want to just show you quite briefly a couple of blowups of the area so that you can get an idea of where it is in relationship to Coeur d'Alene. And so, what we've got is, you want to, you want to put these up, Peter, would you? Real briefly, as you can see from this, this is Coeur d'Alene. The yellow is 760 acres, and this is the priority area, and the next one is 1,375 acres. And this, where they want to put this is right over in here.
Right.
It's way outside of the plan. And just to, not to belabor it, you all know this a whole lot better than I ever will, but this is, this is the area right here. We're right here. See all this darkness? This is heavy industrial, it's, it's, where we are is the Double Eagle Refinery. Reno King Land Development Company, which I also represent, is just to the due east, it's 7.6 acres, and it butts up against Reno on the, on the east side, and our property, Durishburg, on the west. So, this is where the motel is, and we're right there. There's a big, the Leacy Asphalt Plant right to the north and west of us, it's heavy industrial. Just to the west of us is, is a midstream pipeline gas plant, and to the west of that is another big recycling facility. Permit me just to do this. Thank you. One of the things that, I did some really unscientific research to try to figure out who is building what where in terms of hotels and things like that. I saw the article by Steve Lackmire that says nobody lives here, and it's where the Health Sciences Center is, and it says, what we need to do is we need to develop the area between Northeast 8th and Phillips going north, and possibly Northeast 4th up to Northeast 13th, up to, yeah, Northeast 4th up to Northeast 13th Street, but, but nothing south of Northeast 4th, okay? So, that's one thing that was ignored. I did notice that Embassy Suites Hotel is being built on Northeast 8th and Phillips, nothing closer to us. There's, Hilton is planning on building a hotel on Yukon, Edmund, Southwest 15th, and Quell Springs. They're not interested in this area over here. I see that the development on Reno starts at the 600 block going west, nothing. I, I see that the development on Reno starts at the 600 block going west, nothing moving east. So let me quickly go to the, the staff report. The staff report says that this is, quote, this is initial cap, traditional neighborhoods. That's a defined term. I found traditional neighborhoods in the OKC Plan 2020. That's where I found the traditional neighborhoods concept, and I'll, and I'll go right to that in just a second. But before I do, I wanted to just bring to your attention a couple things that I thought were mistakes that were in the, in the staff report recommendation. One of them, it's on page six, and it's called Planning. And what it says is that typical land uses in these areas range from outdoor storage of oilfield equipment to large indoor manufacturing and warehouse facilities. Well, there, it isn't large indoor manufacturing and warehousing facilities. Deleese is outdoor, Derrishburg's outdoor, DCP Midstream is outdoor, and Stedard Metals is outdoor. Those are the, that's what's going on adjacent to this property. So I thought that was a mistake. It, it again mentions the fact that this was within the traditional neighborhoods development area, but there are, quote, "no neighborhoods" in the immediate area. So what I did was, like I say, I looked up the traditional neighborhoods development, the traditional neighborhoods development area, and it's in this OKC Plan 2020. Very briefly, it's broken down into vision and then for our purposes, industrial areas. And so I found this to be of importance to you. It describes the visions, the downtown core, which isn't where we are, what we're talking about, the north downtown, which is North Fourth to North Thirteenth, the Bricktown Entertainment District and the Harrison Walnut area, and then the cultural district, which is Civic Center and Myriad. That's what, that's what the vision is for Oklahoma City. As far as I know, this is not land that's within the Urban Renewal Authority, but I don't know if that's true or not. I just don't think it is. On page seven of this, it, it has a specific breakout for industrial areas. And so what this says is, is that we have industrial areas that we need to preserve and make sure that they're available for the future development of Oklahoma City. The industrial sector remains a significant employer and generator of wealth for many Oklahomans and will no doubt continue to be so for the foreseeable future. The city will continue its efforts to foster new growth and diversified economy. And then what it does is it says assets, and then it says directions for this industrial authority vision. And what it says, review existing barriers to industrial expansion with a view to mitigating these barriers wherever is possible, which to me, a barrier to us is allowing residences, and a motel is a residence. You spend the night there. It encroaches upon our ability to operate our very heavy industrial, could be about the heaviest industrial outdoor operation that Oklahoma City has. I don't know if that's true, but it could be. It's, it's a big time. You can see from the pictures. Aggressively market Oklahoma City's strength for industrial development to out-of-state companies. I think that it would chill efforts for large industrial operations if they knew that, if they knew that maybe you're, you think it's more important to let this motel be adjacent to this big operation than it is for this big operation to operate without being worried about people that are going to be spending the night in this motel. So that's for your consideration. I think that that makes a lot of sense. Next, encourage the development of industrial parks to accommodate varying land use needs. Protect land designated for industrial development from encroaching, from encroachment by conflicting uses. And see, we're right next door, this motel, these people, they're not going to like it. Now, this, the staff report said that there are two or three motels in that intersection between Reno and Martin Luther King, and they are. But these are not the motels that we're seeing and hotels that we're seeing being developed. These are Motel Six, Motel Eight, maybe transient use where they have guests and they don't have steady source of income. And that could be an exaggeration of the type of clientele that they have, but it's, it's not, these people aren't worried about our industrial park, I mean, our Derrishburg. Now, let me just try to finish this real quick because I know you have a lot going on, but the, the, the 2000 to 2020, you know, it continues to say that industrial areas contain the primary locations for manufacturing activities that are associated with major transportation facilities serving manufacturing, such as highways, railways, airports, and terminals. This is a big, perfect location for us because we've got, you know, I-35, I-40. It's gotta be the biggest commercial intersection, isn't it, in the United States? Pretty close. And then we have a gigantic rail hub. This thing finishes by saying, we need, the action of the city is to confine, to confine heavy industrial zoning to established industrial districts. That's what we have to do. And farther than a quarter mile from designated appearance corridors. Now, I don't know what an appearance corridor is. I'm sure you all do, but it's definitely confine it to farther than a quarter mile from designated appearance corridors. Now, let me close just real briefly. In 2008, this particular piece of land was, they wanted to put a motel in that particular piece of land in 2008, and we objected to it for much of the same reasons. And we said, if you, what we want to do is expand our operations. And, and this is not, the people won't like it if, if we do what we say we're going to do and expand. And we did. We, we went from, these are astounding numbers. We went from 14 million pounds a month of activity, recycling, between 2008. Now we're doing 20 million tons, I mean, pounds, 20 million pounds a month of recycling activity as of the beginning of 2014. The Reno King Land Development Company, that 6.7.6 acre piece of property to our east, we're going to collaborate with them. This recycling facility is just going to explode. Not explode, that's the wrong word. This recycling facility is going to expand. And I, now that's what I meant, expand. We're going to have the city and the state and probably the region are going to need our facility over the next 10 years much more than they ever have in the past. And it's, it's not going to be good if we're going to do that and we're going to have a motel really just sitting a stone's throw away. And let me just read you, and I'll be finished. I know you'll be...
You do need to wrap it up.
Yeah, this is it.
All right.
I'm going to read one paragraph. Oklahoma City Code 59-6250 Industrial Districts, I three heavy industrial district. The I three district, that's where we are, is intended to provide locations for those industrial uses that may generate relatively high levels of noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, odor, or light. These industrial uses are incompatible with residential uses. For this reason, it is desirable that they be located downwind and as far away as possible from residential and most commercial uses. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Yeah. Ed?
I, so that raises a lot of questions, I mean, especially since you have a neighborhood right next to your, to your industrial operations. But isn't part of the problem, one, you have a large hotel right across the street, the Bricktown Convention Center and Hotel, which is not just a Motel Eight. It has meeting rooms, it has meetings there. It's a relatively large hotel. And then more importantly, what you didn't mention is that the city put the bus station there. So you have out-of-state travelers, and we created a situation where we put the bus station there. There's no transit that connects to the bus station, so if they arrive there at night, they would presumably need a place to stay if they didn't have an automobile or someone to pick them up. So that seems to me to be a hole in the argument that you've made. I mean, you have a need for people to stay there, and you already have across the street a significant hotel presence. And you have a neighborhood across from your operations, which of course we've dealt with here at council on numerous occasions.
Right. And I think you're right. There is a balancing need here. I think that one of the things that we have here is, is that Reno is, these hotels on Reno are on the south side of Reno, okay? And not on the north side. We're, this proposed place, this proposed location is on the north side of Reno, and it goes all the way up into, well, there's nothing in between the new proposed hotel and our location where we are, except for some trees and an O G and E transformer facility. When we did this in 2008, we went and interviewed those people in where it just says hotel, not C four hotel, but hotel. And he told us that he had his, and we put it in the letters that we made copies of and sent to you. He said that if possible, he always put his overnight guests on the south side of their hotel because of us. Now, we've done a lot since then to try to mitigate the reasons why they moved us, they moved the residents to the south. We're still getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're going to continue to get. What if we get twice as big today? Is there any law that says we can't get twice as big? No, there's not. What if we get twice as big and that motel's there and the Greyhound people are going to say, well, we're definitely not going to spend the night in this motel next door to the Greyhound bus station because that place over there is doing 40 million pounds a month. And it's, that's just the way it is. We're there first.
All right. Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, John, you want to?
I was going to ask what John's, I know you've got a lot of concerns about that neighborhood to the north, and I'd just be interested to hear what you have to say. I do have one comment, is that if this were the opposite of this, if this was going into the neighborhood to the north, the neighborhood that already exists, and we were going to put a C, an I three crusher in the middle of that neighborhood, we would be screaming about it. We'd be saying, no, 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 we can't do that. It seemed to me this is a little bit the reverse of that. This is going to further create problems for a business that exists there legally. But I, but I didn't want to say that until, I wanted to hear what you have to say.
All right. Thank you. This one right here, I think as the city continues to grow, it's time for us to truly clean up the corridors that lead into downtown Oklahoma City. We are investing millions of dollars improving the downtown corridor. We need to also improve those corridors that lead into downtown. Just south of this particular location is the Oklahoma River. How many millions are we putting into the Oklahoma River? I did have an opportunity to meet with the applicant. The applicant actually owns the travel center and truck stop. And so his view of it is, for his clients, it's easier for them to be able to get gas, park their trucks, and have a place to, to stay. Basically, a one-stop center. Now, in between the proposed location to be rezoned and the gentleman's recycling plant, you have between 50 to 100 acres. And I actually had the opportunity to meet with the, the family who actually owns those acres, and they are actually for it because they feel it's time to truly change how Reno corridor currently is. Now, the gentleman talked about the need to possibly expand his operation just north, further north, once you pass the 50 to 100 acres that is currently vacant. You have, you have a superfund site. So it's impossible for the gentleman to expand to the east because of the superfund site. And also, there are other superfund sites nearby this particular location. Several years ago, the city and Urban Renewal made the property owners around this area clean up their property. Matter of fact, code enforcement and, and others made them, because at one point in time, you had 50 to 100 acres of basically high grass, trees, unkept property, and the city, we made the property owners go through and clean that area up. So I'm actually in, in favor of this. Yes, it, it may cause some concerns, but I think this is, this is a great opportunity for our city to help change the corridor leading into downtown Oklahoma City. And also presents an opportunity for those who may be, and I thank you, Councilman Shadie, you bring up a good point about the bus station. So again, on October the 23rd, the Planning Commission recommended approval with zero legal protests and a total of one signature, which equals zero. So with that said, I'm going to move for approval.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments, Your Honor. And Councilman Pettis, I would agree. This, this area is, is somewhat, not somewhat, it's an important area. I don't think the city has the funds available to force the relocation of this industrial area into other parts of the city. That would be by far the best solution. Just take these existing industrial facilities out, but it would be a very expensive process to accomplish that. If we're not going to do that, I hate to see us allow further pressure to develop against these industrial facilities unless we have a, a solution in place, which I don't think we have, to relocate them. I agree. I don't think this is the best place for the bus station. Perhaps if they could move north up to Fourth Street and MLK and work to revitalize Fourth East Reno is really the, the connecting road between Oklahoma City and, say, Dale City and Midwest City, if you don't want to use I-40. This is an important area to the city of Oklahoma City. I'd like to see it continue to develop and improve. I just don't think this hotel in this particular location is the first step in that direction. So I'm, I'm concerned about having it put there in place. I see potential more problems by bringing in a hotel right there than solving the existing problems with it. Thank you.
Yeah, Pete?
As much as I, I, I would like to go along with, with you, Councilman Pettis, very much. I'd like, I mean, that's kind of where I, how I feel about things. But I don't think that we can conforce change through the use of a sledgehammer. I mean, I think that's what this is. I, I face... I, I face this kind of situations in my area all the time, where I have businesses that are legally there, but they've been, up against them are businesses that are not compatible with them. I see it all the time. I see it at landfills. I see it at, at a, a site that I have that's similar, much smaller, much lower, smaller in size and impact, but it's legally near a neighborhood. The idea that I would put one of those in the center of a neighborhood, to me, is, I don't think any of us would agree that's a good way to do it. But to put a neighbor, this kind of a use in the center of one of these is, seems to me, just the very same thing. If we're going to attack the idea of, of heavy industrial uses, we have to have some kind of a solution. I just think sledgehammering them, meat-hack-ing them into doing it by putting something that's so incompatible with what they do next to them is just going to create a furor that at some point in time, we're going to be, we're going to be sorry we did that. If we want to move that type of activity out of that area, and it might, will be that it should be moved, although I don't see other council members standing enough to volunteer to have that situation moved into their ward either, it'd be nice to, it would be nice if it were someplace isolated where it didn't impact anybody. But I can tell you, representing a rural area for the last 30 years, there's no such area. There's no such place that you can take a facility like this facility and it be accepted and compatible with everybody around it. So in my view, you have to go back to the law. What's the law say? The law says they're there legally, and that's what they, and they have a right to be there. And to do things that encroach on that right, and I think by, by rezoning incompatible uses to that area is just that. And I, I'm going to have to join Councilman Greenwell in voting against, although I, I hate to do that, because I would like to see a much more orderly way of doing it. I'd like to see us address the idea of whether or not we want I-3 in this city or not, and if we do, where we're going to put it. And do it in an orderly basis rather than this kind of a basis. And I, so with some regret, personal regret with regard to your position and mine, I'm going to have to vote against it also.
James, you'll let James?
Um, you know, what we're, what this request is, is not for us to approve a hotel, it's to approve changing from I-2 to I-1. And so if we deny it, then what we're saying is that I-3 and I-1 are not compatible, at least in my mind. That's how it is. And I-1 is, according to the map, just east or just west of the area where we're rezoning, or where this request is. And so to me, it certainly seems compatible to have I-1 next to I-1, next to I-3, across the street from C-4. Seems pretty compatible to me. I mean, I can understand why some people might not want to have a hotel next to them because their operations would encroach on them, or would encroach on the hotel. But you know, if the hotel owner, if the land wants to build a hotel there, I mean, they certainly know, if they own the land, they know what's already going on up there just north of them, so, and they think that they have a market that wouldn't, doesn't mind that sort of activity and that sort of noise close to them. I think that I, I wouldn't want to stand in that property owner's way of, of building a hotel there, because I certainly see it as compatible.
Ed, you'll make comments?
Same thing as James. I just wanted to give an opinion from Kenny as to where, if we deny the application and we end up in district court, would the city's, the strength of the city's position be, given the surrounding, the hotel across the street and what James was talking about?
The court would make a decision based on the basic physical facts, and that would include the surrounding zoning. As Councilman Griner has pointed out, there is already I-1 very close, I-3, I-2 to the east, C-4 Hotel to the south.
But the other interesting thing about this case is, I don't think I've ever, as long as I've been here, I don't remember a, somebody protesting a downzoning, a less intense zoning. I, I don't, I can't remember that, but actually protesting that, because it seems like that would be desirable is to downzone, or make it less, less intrusive, so.
So Kenny, you're saying with city staff recommending passing the planning commission and the surrounding uses, this city would be in a difficult position should we deny the application?
It would most likely be approved by the district court.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion from John, and we have a second. Any other comments before we vote? All right, John's motion is to approve the zoning request changed. Cast your votes, and it passes 7-2. We're on to item 9A2. It's a zoning case in Ward 3 at 5911 Ranger Lane. It's currently R1 single-family residential, and it would become a new I-2 moderate industrial district. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anybody signed up on this?
Yes, sir.
This was unanimously passed by the Planning Commission. It is compatible with the uses around it. The business adjacent wants to expand. I move for approval.
All right, comments or questions on 9A2? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to 9A3. It's a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1101 Southeast 44th Street. It's currently C1 neighborhood commercial, and it would become an I-2 moderate industrial district. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Has anyone signed up? The Planning Commission approved, so I'm going to move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second on 9A3. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. 9A4 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1204 South Young's Boulevard. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would become an O1 limited office district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I think there was a, Bob, this is the case where there was a easement requested, and it has now been submitted. I thought I saw that email. Great. So this is a request to allow a parking lot to adjoin a church, and there were no protests. And the easement was to fulfill a request for a 20-foot site triangle right on the corner. And as that has been received, I'd move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone hoping to speak on 9A4? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 2400 South Morgan Road. It's currently a double-A agricultural district, and it would become a new plan unit development if passed. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, has anybody signed up to speak on this? I think the applicant is present. Do you want to make any comments, David?
522 Call Core Drive, David Box here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Isaac Christian on behalf of Landmark Homes. This is a case in which, when we started out, we had significant protests from the neighbors to the north, and this is a good example of a developer working with the neighbors and coming to a resolution. And by the time we got to Planning Commission, everybody was on board, and the Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. We would ask for the same, and we're here to answer any questions.
This is an excellent example, and I appreciate the applicant and the neighbors working together on this. There are a number of technical evaluations, and you agree to all of those.
Yes, sir.
I move for approval with the inclusion of the technical evaluation.
All right, we have a motion and a second on 9A5. Is anyone else here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 520 West John Kilpatrick Service Road. It's currently R1 single-family, as well as a plan unit development, and it would become a new pod if approved. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk. Has anyone signed up to speak? I see that the applicant is present. And a quick question for staff under comments. Have you all had the chance to review their plans?
Yes, it's, we're comfortable with their proposal.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the applicant to please come up and give a brief presentation, please.
Sir, thank you. My name's Brian Kuhn. I'm representing the applicant. This is going to be a psychiatric hospital out on Kilpatrick Turnpike. It's just immediately east of the church that's been there for quite a while. This area is greatly growing quickly. New St. Anthony Hospital, there's a couple of medplex buildings on that property called P D 1544, and as well as the Top Golf and everything else on the other side of Western. So this area of town has been skipped over and now is being utilized, which is great. It's going to be a nice facility, one-story inpatient, outpatient psychiatric hospital. Be glad to answer any questions. Plank Commission approved it unanimously.
All right, thank you. And the applicant, I would encourage you to please meet with our police chief and also the sheriff department, because from time to time, we do have people who need those type of assistance that our law enforcement agency have, have to deal with. So I do again encourage the, the applicant, the police, meet with Chief City and also Sheriff Wetzel, because we need those beds. We need to be able to transport people where they are able to receive those type of services. So again, I, I encourage you strongly, I'm going to use the word strongly, encourage you to please visit with Chief City and also Sheriff Wetzel, because right now, we, we definitely have a bed shortage. And so again, I, I ask. Planning Commission approved. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A6. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 5. The address is 13505 South Santa Fe Avenue. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new planning and development. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant is here, and David, would you like to make your way up here? While he's coming up here, I do just want to make a point. While this is currently considered double-A, or zone double-A agriculture, that may be a little misleading to individuals who are not familiar with this area. It is heavily residential. The city of Moore is directly on the other side of Santa Fe. This is on the east boundary, far east boundary of Ward 5, and it certainly is a, a type of use that is greatly needed in this part of the city. So David, would you please make your presentation?
Yes, sir. Again, for the record, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is H. McNish with the Development Group. What we have is an opportunity here through a zoning case to approve a retail grocery store and fuel center. And as the council said, because of its location on the edge of the city, it's a great opportunity to attract those folks that live in Moore to come and shop at this grocery store. We did have a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. We did have some, some extensive work with staff on coming up with appropriate signage and appropriate building elevations, which you see now before you, and I believe they're also in your, your staff report. So Planning Commission did recommend approval, and we would ask for your approval. We're here to answer any questions.
All right, we have a motion and a second on 9A7. Anyone else here hoping to speak? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9A8 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1613 North May. It's currently C3 community commercial, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. And has anybody signed up to speak? No? Okay. This is a permit to allow a tavern that's currently serving beer to serve mixed beverages as well. It's in compliance with the OKC Plan. Some additional work was done right at the end, I think, Bob, and they removed some additional uses. I would move approval.
Okay, is there a second on 9A8? All right, cast your votes on 9A8. It passed unanimously. 9A9 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 2412 North Ollie. It's currently NC neighborhood conservation, urban design, and a 23rd Street uptown corridor overlay district, and it would all become a new spot if approved. Ed?
Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
I'd move for approval.
All right. Any comments or questions from anyone on 9A9? All right, cast your votes.
Here's a question, Your Honor. How is the yoga studio and the residence going to be compatible?
What? I'm sorry, what was that?
How, how do they, how are they attempting to make the yoga studio compatible with the residence?
To the residence?
That's what the application said. Drop a yoga studio and a residence.
They'd like, they want to operate the yoga studio and then have the residence on site, so it will, they're compatible because it's a biz, a home business, basically. They're going to live there and operate.
Thank you.
All right, we're voting on 9A9. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 9A10 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 7623 McGee Street. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. It's in Ward 3. Larry?
Yes, has anybody signed up for this? The Planning Commission unanimously approved it. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anyone hoping to speak on item 9A10? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. All right, item 9B is a, let's see, this would close a, this is an alleyway, isn't it, in Ward 6? Meg?
Yes, it's, it's a couple of little cleanup items. This, this was, item was deferred from our last meeting, and I requested at that time that we have a coordinated meeting with the planning department staff and with Public Works to be sure that all of the issues were addressed. This is just important to establish the property lines so that we can work effectively on all the appropriate setbacks and things for the O G and E.
Actually, the, the planning department would like a little more mass on the site, and there's excess right of ways, so let's provide additional, a little more mass on the site.
And I appreciate everybody's willingness to get together and spend their time to work this out. I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9B. Cast your votes.
May I?
Yes.
Would the legal be amended on this one?
That's correct. There was a, an amended legal description to reduce the right of way, so we need to approve the amended legal description and the application.
Okay. So is that part of your motion?
I would make a motion to amend the legal description.
All right, we'll vote again. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, item 9C is an ordinance that's in for final hearing today, and this is something council's been considering for, oh, I guess over a month now. It has to do with our mechanical code. Is there any comments or questions from council? All right, how about a motion then on 9C1?
Move the item, second.
Are we voting on 9C1 and 2?
Yes.
Separately.
Separately, okay.
Vote on 1.
All right, cast your votes on 9C1. Passes 8 to 1. And then on item 9C2 is the resolution.
Move the item, second.
Okay.
Did he vote no on the building vote?
Well, here, replace it, no.
Did you want to vote again, Pat? Okay. Then we're on to item 9C2, and this is the resolution on the mechanical code. Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes, and 9C2 passes 8-0. Item 9D is a similar issue, but it's with our plumbing code, and this is, again, something council has been familiar with for over a month, and it was introduced here in the council meeting. Is there a motion on 9D1? And a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And then the resolution on the plumbing code would be item 9D2. Need a motion?
Move the item, second.
All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously as well. Item 9E is a public hearing today. Council was considering this the last meeting, and this is, would draw us into compliance with federal law. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item 9E?
Second.
All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously and moves forward toward a final hearing. Item 9F is an item that's come to us from the Traffic Commission, and this would authorize the removal of some one-hour metered parking on North Robinson.
This is a request on behalf of the architects to remove some spaces to create a passenger loading zone. I would move approval.
And did this pass Traffic Commission? Is that?
The, the appeal's coming up. This did pass Traffic Commission.
It did?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9F. Anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 9G is an item that's being introduced today, and Bob Palmkele is here to take us through this item.
Good morning. Bob Palmkele, City Treasurer. I've been asked to provide you an overview of the changes that are before you today in regard to the hotel tax ordinance. These changes are considered administrative, therefore they don't require a vote of city residents. Just starting out, Section 5275 will amend the, to provide a limit on the number of times a hotel- times a hotel can amend a report for a given period. We've had some experiences with some hotels that will amend a report period multiple times. You can imagine how much time and effort that takes to track that. It gets very confusing. Now, this won't prohibit a hotel from amending their report multiple times, it's just that if they do require multiple amendments, now they'll have to get the approval of the city's finance director. Section 5276 is basically allowing city staff to communicate electronically with hotel operators, particularly by email. This will improve our efficiencies within our division, our ability to communicate with hotel operators regarding correction notices, errors, that sort of thing. We're also working on an online application that at some point will allow hotel operators to file their reports online. So this will allow some automated communication with the hotels. Section 5286 is being added. This is in regard to hotel tax audits and provides specific procedures for when we do perform a hotel tax audit. It also provides enforcement capability in the event there's noncompliance with this, with the hotel audit program. The hotel audit program is new within Treasury, but it's always been allowed within city ordinance, our right to audit the hotels. And it's also been a recommendation of a city auditor for, in the past. We feel that, well, certainly it's a best practice within any kind of tax collection industry. We feel it'll allow us to verify the taxes that are being reported by the hotels. But it's also a reflection of the city's management of our due diligence of the hotel or the bonded debt at the fairgrounds, which are supported by hotel tax. Keep in mind, unlike sales tax, which is collected by the Oklahoma Tax Commission and then remitted to the city, hotel taxes are actually the responsibility of the city. We collect them ourselves. So that's why we feel that the audit program will be beneficial. We began working on the hotel tax audit program several months ago. We initially worked with the Oklahoma Tax Commission and we based our audit program on the same program that they use when they audit for sales tax. Our thought behind that was that this would be a procedure, an audit program that the hotels are already familiar with, so that we felt would be a benefit. In fact, the language that's before you today is very much in line with sales tax statutes. We also worked again with the Oklahoma Tax Commission. We worked with our city auditor to develop an audit plan as to how we'll go about performing these audits. We researched, we reviewed what other cities do. Other cities have audit programs also. We want to make sure that we, if we saw something that we weren't incorporating into our program, that we would take advantage of that. We also took suggestions from our hotel operators. Any suggestions that they had in regard to the audit program, we incorporated into what we were doing. Finally, we took the opportunity to visit with hotel tax stakeholders and by that, I mean, we visited with the hotel association. Certainly, we wanted to make them aware that this was coming down a pipe, that, you know, that we were being transparent with everything that we were doing. So we did meet with the hotel association a couple of months ago. We've also visited with the fairgrounds and with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, again, just to let them know what we're doing, that this is a new program that we'll be incorporating. Our intent is that we'll start performing actual hotel tax audits in the very near future, following the approval and enactment of these changes. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions for Bob? And again, this idea is just being introduced today. A public hearing would be set for December 30th and then final adoption currently scheduled for January 13th.
Yeah, I have, Bob, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you include bed and breakfasts in your analysis? Are they included in our hotel motel tax program?
They're already included as a hotel, so yes, they would be included in hotel audits also.
Have you been collecting taxes from these people?
We actually only have one bed and breakfast within Oklahoma City right now, so we do collect taxes from them when they do have folks that stay at their accommodations.
You know, we had a bed and breakfast at Quail Creek for a while. It's been...
I'm sorry?
We had a bed and breakfast in Quail Creek tradition to Oklahoma City not too long ago. I think it may be shut down now or in the process of shutting down. But I think we've got more bed and breakfasts than we realize, Oklahoma City. And I know it's a small amount in terms of individual bed and breakfast operation, but in terms of the total, it may be significant. And in terms of fairness, they ought to pay the same tax across. I just curious.
Okay. Yeah, David?
Your Honor. Maybe I misunderstood the way you presented it, but in regards to filing amended motel tax reports, is that at the discretion of your office whether or not to accept the amended return?
Usually, I mean, there's no limitation or there wasn't a limitation before. So say if a hotel encountered a problem or they realized that they had an exemption that they could have claimed before, then they have the right to file an amended report. This is just to prohibit those hotels that come in and they're filing amended report and they'll come in and file another one just over and over on that same month. And then we're trying to track that throughout the year, so it gets very confusing.
Okay, well, I understand and I know sometimes these reports can be confusing. I'm just a little bit concerned about limiting the ability of any business to file, to amend any previously filed reports without good cause.
Right.
And as long as we don't hear any complaints from the motels that they're being denied the ability to amend in a manner that they don't perceive to be fair, then I think that's okay. Because I do understand the problem of somebody continuing to amend the same month's report.
Right.
My other question concerns the way this is written. They have one year to file an amended return. Throughout the state and in most tax authorities, businesses are given a three-year window to amend any type of report. Can you explain why we would like to limit that to only a year as opposed to three years?
Yeah, actually, the one year, we're not changing. That's always been in place. So I don't know if there's a specific reason for the one year to be put in place, but that's not something that we're asking to change this time. It's something that, like I said, it's always been in place.
Well, we've seen instances where there's been a change in management or a change in ownership and sometimes they don't realize that errors have been made within a year's period of time. And so I would suggest that as we continue to look at this, we may want to consider modifying that one-year limitation to expand it to a traditional three-year timeframe to file amended reports.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, item just being introduced today. Ready to accept it and move on on item 9G?
Second.
Okay, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Francis has brought to our attention that when we passed the mechanical and plumbing code a while ago, we should have voted on the emergency on those two items for publication purposes. So we're going to vote first. I'll take that motion on item 9C1. This is for the emergency. Cast your votes. It passes 8-0. And then we'll need a motion on item 9D1. Cast your votes and that emergency passes as well. All right, now we're on item 9H and this is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak or any item listed under 9H?
Ms. Bass.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes and it passed unanimously. And then 9I is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. We have one person that has signed up. Pat Donnelly?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. My name is Pat Donnelly. My residence is 3424 Northwest 45th here in Oklahoma City. I'm here on behalf of my 91-year-old mother, Marjorie Donnelly, who lives at 3028 Northwest 66th, which is the house directly to the east of the property on item U 3032 Northwest 66th. I am simply here to, if there was any objection to declaring this house unsecured, we, or I'd like to put it over on the dilapidated, but I understand we can't do that. I spoke with the Councilman Shadid's representative last week and I understand that there's a procedure that has to go forward. But this house has been a problem for several years and...
So your mother is a neighbor?
My mother is, well, she owns the house. She is a neighbor. How can I put this? Reluctantly, she has moved from that house and part of the reason is this house in question. Neighbors have had to put locks on their outside faucets because we've had transients who have stolen water from the faucets. There was a tree on the back of the house.
Did you say your mother was the owner of the property?
No, not this property.
Okay.
The property just to the east of it, 3028 Northwest 66th.
Okay. And so do you have any idea where the owner of this property is?
Has absolutely no idea.
Okay.
Well, I, let me take that back. The last time, or sometime in the last two months, a transient was there who I had a conversation with, who indicated that either the owner or the owner's son was in prison and he was, they were friends and so he told him he could go stay there.
Okay.
We've had, we've had drug enforcement raids over the, in the last couple of months at late at night. This house really needs to be...
Yeah. Charles, can you add anything to the conversation?
We agree with him.
Well, that's a good thought.
We'll secure it and we'll track the securing for...
But have you, have you had conversations with the owner? Do you know who the owner is? Is the gra, I mean, is the grass being mowed? Is...
At this point, the grass is being mowed every once in a while. The city has probably mowed it in the past. We show the owner actually lives at, on Northwest 33rd Terrace. We've had no contact with him.
Have we tried or...
Yes, we sent him a notice and placard to the house.
Okay. So what, your recommendation would be?
We'll secure it and track the securing for 18 months. And at that point, then it may be, become dilapidated and we can move on, maybe tear down the house if it still shows to be a problem.
Okay.
All right, we're going to leave it on the list then. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other comments or questions on any item listed under unsecured structures on 9I? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9J is an appeal of a denial that came from the Traffic and Transportation Commission and this has to do with the consideration of removing some parking restrictions on 16th Street. It's located in Ward 7 and John, a couple of people have signed up to speak and obviously Eric's here to talk about the city's point of view.
I think, Mayor and Council, just as an introduction to this item, you do not see very many appeals to Traffic Commission items and so let me kind of bring you up to speed on this one. There was existing restricted parking on Northeast 16th between Lindsay and North Phillips and we researched a little bit with staff and it looks like it goes back to the 1970s and so it's been in place for some time. We did receive an application from Ms. Bass that went to the Traffic Commission on November 17th to actually remove that restriction on the north side. At that Traffic Commission meeting, she unfortunately was not able to attend, but there was a protester that attended and so the Traffic Commission denied the request. She's now made the appeal in her absence of that meeting to appeal to you as the city council. And so it's now for your decision and I think that you've got, of course, a couple of people maybe to be heard, but I would tell you that some of the options that you have as we get ready to discuss this, whether you approve or you deny, an applicant or a new applicant or I should just say, this can be reconsidered by the Traffic Commission in about six months with a new application being made, either decision that you might make today. So you do have some flexibility with that, knowing that there is a reapplication process that can occur.
So would that reapplication process require an additional fee?
It would be a new application and again, there's just a six-month grace period for that.
And that application fee is roughly...
I don't, I don't recall. I'd need to look that up.
Okay.
Again, staff's available to answer questions if you need.
All right, Jaclyn Bass?
Yes.
Hi.
I wanted to apologize...
Good morning, Jaclyn. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Jaclyn Bass and my address is 705 Northeast 16th Street. And I wanted to apologize for not being here for the first hearing, but because of uncontrollable circumstances, I couldn't be here. But one of the reasons why is because of some of the difficulty I was experiencing, I called to find out what I could do to see if there could be a change made. After talking to a lot of the neighbors, they said that they enforced it, I guess, because of students parking and blocking driveways. Well, after getting the petition and talking to a lot of the neighbors, it was a lot of them that had the same complaints that I had. It was like over maybe 95% and they just didn't really know what to do about it. Some of the neighbors have gotten thousands of dollars worth of tickets and what it is is that we have a shared driveway, so there's never enough parking space. So if I can't, if we can't park in the driveway, then we have to park on the street and then there's, we get tickets. And then if neighbors or friends or families come and visit, they can't visit during the day because they get tickets. And then if the driveway gets full, you have to constantly move to let someone out, you know, if they're blocked. And so if you, if someone parked, gets there before someone else and they, you know, they come and knock on your door, "Could you please let me out?" So I didn't know I was the only one experiencing that, but after talking to a lot of the neighbors, a lot of them have been experienced, they experienced the same thing and they felt, okay, it's always been this way, so we just can't do anything. And I don't know that I can, but I just wanted to see if it was something that could be done or to help to make it better.
Well, I'm, now, this no parking restriction was put in for a reason. You're saying it was because students were parking there?
Well, after talking to some of the neighbors, because it's, the property that I, that I live in is a family property. My grandmother has passed away, has been in the family for a long time. And after talking to some of the neighbors, they said that they, they had it put up because of the medical center, students were parking and blocking driveways. So they had it put there to, you know, I guess to protect the neighbors, but it's been that way for so long and it seems like they, they have parking now for the students on certain streets like maybe 13th or 14th Street.
So you believe that if they remove the restriction, that the students won't come back?
I don't know that they won't come back, but it seems as if that they, I mean, I didn't do any research to find out, but I know...
There might be better options now than there were when the restrictions were put in place.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Well, someone else has spoken to speak on the other side of it, so we'll hear from them as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Jaclyn. All right, James Tyler?
And James will also need your name and address for the record. James Tyler, 701 Northeast 16th. And I have several reasons that I think we should keep the parking restrictions in place. One, the parking restrictions aren't that unreasonable. They're only business hours, Monday through Friday. All the, all, all night and all weekend, you can park in these, on the street. The other thing is the science center is still there and it's bigger than ever and it always will be there. And students are notorious for parking for free. And if you look on these streets that don't have parking on the north side, every week they are constantly full. On, I think it's 13th and I think it's, the other one is 15th. But the, the HSC is going to be there for a while and I believe that if, if it's lifted, the students will park. And I don't think there's any way of trying to figure out who is a student and who is not.
No, there isn't. Yeah, that probably wouldn't be, wouldn't force. Yeah, let me, let me ask, and if this is, this is an idea, it may not be a good one. I wonder if it's possible we could send this back to the Traffic Commission when she could be there to make her appeal? Seems to me like it was denied through matter of process. If you have one person speaking against a change and no one's speaking for it, you couldn't deny the Traffic Commission's opinion that, that they should feel one way or the other. And she said she has unforeseen circumstances that didn't allow her to attend. Can we do that without starting the six-month clock again? Can we just send it back to Traffic Commission and ask them to review it one more time?
Yes, the appeal's in front of you now. You can send it back to the Traffic Commission.
And I regret, because James, I imagine you came to the last meeting and...
I did, yes.
And what I'm saying is you need to do it again and I apologize for that. That would be three times you've come down here.
There's other things that are involved in the petition that don't make any sense to me and I couldn't get it out of the Traffic Commission.
And I'm, I guess I'm, I guess I would prefer to cut you off if the council agrees that we can send this back to Traffic Commission. If we want to hear it today and make a decision and over, you know, override whatever the Traffic Commission's point of view would be or not, then we can do that. James, John, it's in Ward 7.
I would like to send this back to Planning, excuse me, back to Traffic.
Okay. And, and James, I know you came down here with, with a speech and you're ready to make your point, but I, we would really rather have it go back to Traffic and, and then have her... her allowed to show up and, and start the process over.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate your, your efforts on this. I know you're just speaking your mind.
All right.
All right, thanks. All right, is that a motion, then, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we have a second. All right, so item 9J is to send this back to the Traffic Commission. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9K is a resolution that would amend some project locations from the general fund capital balance, and will allow us to make some improvements of streetscapes on Western Avenue between 41st and 45th. And Eric is here. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually have an item for your consideration today. It actually affects two wards. It's Ward 2 and Ward 5. You may recall, in October of 2013, there was a fund balance that was provided for city projects, predominantly the enhancing of city streets, and we were asked as a staff to prepare a list of projects. And so those were attached as an exhibit A at that time. We had not identified yet the Ward 2 projects, and there's since been a change in Ward 5. And so to identify both of those, one project we've been working diligently on with Councilman Shadid is a Ward 2 project for an enhanced streetscape on Western Avenue from 41st to 45th, and that project is included in the list. Then you're gonna find a Ward 5 change. We were actually the recipient of some additional ACOG grant dollars, and so we were able to make an adjustment on some resurfacing by lowering an amount of the previous $200,000 to $100,000, but then applying for this grant that provided for significant resurfacing of the roads along I-240. And so we've added a new project for Ward 2. We've made a small modification to Ward 5, and those are for your consideration today.
All right, Ed?
Well, I might, might just say on the streetscape, I mean, this is the result of about a two-year-plus effort that began with a study by the OU Institute of Quality Communities. It's really the most, probably the most intensive streetscape work outside of Project 180, outside of downtown, with the possible exception of the Plaza District, with the difference being that there was relatively little commercial activity when you did the streetscape improvements in the Plaza District. Here, you have a robust, a commercial district. And so it will present some unique challenges for the city, I think, most importantly, probably for the businesses. And if we can find a way, obviously, it's harder to retrofit this kind of intense streetscape, which will involve bull bouts, where it makes a shorter distance for pedestrians to walk across the street, a chicane in the middle of the street that actually was designed to slow down traffic to a crawl, and, and much wider sidewalks like in the Plaza District. But to get that, all that done will, will be, certainly be a burden on the businesses. We saw that in Project 180, and that will be, but hopefully, I think we've learned some things from Project 180. So here, we're just gonna go a block at a time. We'll finish that block before we move on to the next block. And I would just, if it's passed by the council today, I'd encourage everyone to really support those businesses during the construction. And if we, and if we show and learn that we can keep these businesses going during this kind of intense construction, then hopefully, we can do it elsewhere.
Have the businesses been asked if they want this or not?
So we've had countless meetings, and Eric's been probably five or six.
I understand you've had countless meetings, but has the businesses been contacted, and they're in favor of this budget?
Yes, we, we've met with every property owner, with the exception of one who I'm meeting with today at 4 o'clock. But there, we certainly did not get everything we wanted from the property owners. You'd never do, I guess. And so I'd, I'd say that it certainly represents a compromise. There's, there's things we wanted that we didn't get from the property owners, but in the end, their concerns and, and some of the needs of their particular businesses, we modified what came out of the OU study at their request. There is one property owner who's still, we, we, we need to talk with, and, and we'll have those discussions in the next week. But even if, even, we're prepared to just not do anything at that particular property owners.
Did I understand you say you're gonna do one block and see what your reaction was before you get your second, or?
No, not, not see what the reaction is, but complete the work. So you'll take a, you'll take a block and you'll, you'll, the, the streetscape is basically building to building. I mean, you're taking out the sidewalk, street, and sidewalk, and then redoing it. So it's, it's an enormous amount of construction between these businesses. So you'll, you'll shut down half the street and allow traffic to go in that one direction on that half the street. And then you'll, when you finish that part, then you'll go to the other side, and the traffic will go the opposite direction. And once you've completed that construction in that block, then, then and only then will you go to the next block. As opposed to maybe in Project 180, where we got a little overextended, and you had multiple businesses being affected at the same time. Here, we'll direct all of our efforts intensively to get that block done before we move forward.
Did the ULI study, excuse me, investigate the loss of business during construction?
No, didn't try and quantify that, but clearly, we all understood, and, and in all these meetings, and there's a, there's a Western Business District that is going out to the neighborhoods, and we'll have another public meeting in January where we will continue our efforts to let the neighborhoods know that really the whole city, we'd ask the whole city to support these businesses, businesses during the construction phase.
I think to add, from staff's perspective, we've had a number of meetings, and we're working with their sales calendar. So one of the things we had anticipated, we might actually go into construction before the holidays, but we were going to shut down purposely through the holidays to allow their businesses to continue. We've had some additional meetings with property owners, so the construction won't start until after the New Year, but yes, we're keeping that in mind as we move forward. New Year's and anything that might occur into the spring.
As I ask, we had at least one business go down, out of business downtown because of 180 construction. And you're making your comparison to 180 construction scares me. I would hate to see those businesses, in, in an effort to improve their business, go out of it.
But it scares me, too. I mean, I think that's, that's really, you know, but, but hopefully, I think we have learned from Project 180, and it's, it's really gonna be dependent on people making the extra effort, parking just a, a little bit away, and walking to these businesses and supporting them.
You haven't done any research on your average customer, have you? I didn't, no, that's, okay, I don't think they'll do that, but I hope they will. I have asked several times if we had any data that showed that streetscapes really improved things, and nobody could supply any. If you've got that data, I'd be delighted to see it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Ed, you'll make a motion.
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, but I do have one question.
All right.
On the I-240 project, Eric, will you and your staff work with the Invision 240 group to identify the priorities with respect to the location of the new sidewalks?
You know, outside of the fund balance work, I mean, we're prepared to do that. You know, I haven't been contacted in some time since our last meetings with Southside Chamber, but we're, we're very prepared to do so.
I think since we are limited in the amount of funds, knowing that we won't be able to complete sidewalks for the entire area along I-240, I think it'd be helpful to work with that group to identify what they believe are the areas for, of priority to focus on the sidewalks.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All righty, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Everyone, yes, your votes? Pat, okay, thank you. Got that right. All righty, and it's passed. The one. All righty, let's move on to item L, which is a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a primary and general election in the City of Oklahoma City for the purpose of electing council members from Wards 2, 5, 6, and 8. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please, and that passes unanimously.
Madam Vice Mayor, may I ask a question? Has, has a date been set for that election?
Yes, I believe the election is March the 3rd.
March 3rd, thank you.
Yes, it is in the resolution, which actually isn't included with your paper agenda, but it's March 3rd for the primary and April 7th for the runoff.
And Madam Clerk, that was item L1. Do we need to vote on item L2 separately? So this is the proclamation of the mayor related to calling and holding the 2015 regular primary and general elections for the purpose of electing those council members again for Wards 2, 5, 6, and 8. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Second? Okay, cast your votes, please, and that also passes unanimously. Item M1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Russell Moreland.
And he doesn't meet the criteria.
He does meet the criteria.
Move the other.
Second? And that item passes unanimously. Item N1 is a resolution.
Would like to go into executive session on.
We would like to go into executive session on this one, so we need a motion to move to executive session.
Move the other.
And that motion passes unanimously. Item 10O.
We do not need executive session. We'd ask that be stricken from the agenda.
So a motion to strike. Thank you. And the motion to strike passes. Item P is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the collective bargaining negotiations.
We'd ask we go into executive session.
So we do need session for that. A motion to move?
Seven.
Thank you. All votes in favor, cast your votes. That passes unanimously. Item Q is an item, again, to enter into executive session. And we do need.
Yes, we do need.
Request. So a motion to move?
Move the other.
All righty, that passes unanimously. Item 9R, are claims recommended for denial? Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of the items listed in item 9R? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
The other.
Second. Those items are denied. Item 10A, are claims recommended for approval? Again, do we have anyone here requesting to speak on items 10A, claims recommended for approval? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move the other.
Second. If you cast your votes, those claims are approved unanimously. Item 11 are items from council. Pat, do you want to start down at your end?
No, thank you.
John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take the time out and thank, thank the Parks Department for a job well done this past Saturday. Actually, in Ward 5, Stellar Community Center hosted a Christmas toys giveaway with the Prince Hall Shriner's. That was an excellent event, and I had the great opportunity to play Santa Claus. So it was a great event, and also thanks to that center's director, Prince Jones, for a job well done, and her staff.
Thank you, Councilman. David? Larry?
And very briefly, and speaking to your point, Pat, earlier about streetscape, we're doing a streetscape on Northwest 23rd from I-240, I-44, excuse me, out to the Bethany Line. That streetscape is under construction. It has caused a number of challenges for people, but those challenges are being met. And the first benefits, really, of that, I think, were seen in a small way. Windsor Hills Shopping Center used to be one of the prime meccas for shopping in Oklahoma City. And this past Saturday, thanks to the new owners and conjunction with the Windsor Area Business Group, a festival was started out there for Christmas, bringing back the, the Christmas spirit. And while that's just a first step, and there's a long way to go, it shows that I think these streetscapes are paying off to revitalize an area and to protect the neighborhoods around there. I'd like to thank Windsor Hills, the new owners of the shopping center, and also some of the businesses that participated, and we're looking forward to greater things in the future. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Ed?
I just want to thank everyone who came out about 12 days ago. We had a town hall meeting on the plan, Comprehensive Plan. Councilman Pettis came, thank you for coming. About 300 people came, and it was a very good conversation. I look forward to commencing the public input period. You know, one thing that came out of that, processing that, is that there really isn't anything about water in the Comprehensive Plan, and I'm not sure if that's the purview of the Water Utilities Trust, or if that's by designer, if that maybe is a possible amendment. But I, I just was struck by that, and it's something I wasn't aware of before.
There is a comprehensive water master plan that's been adopted by the Water Trust a number of years ago, but maybe that should be included in the document.
So could, can that be incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan?
We can certainly talk planning about that.
Okay. So then, speaking of water, there's an, an additional public meeting this Thursday night at the Will Rogers Conservatory at 6:00 PM, in which a discussion, or a proposal be presented about drill, oil drilling at Lake Hefner. And I think it's important to point out that this was an unsolicited proposal, not something that the Water Department came up with, but unsolicited proposal from the Pedestal Oil Company, who, I guess, inherited or took over the, the oil drilling operations at the Airport Trust, possibly, but?
They do some work at the parks. They're, they're in at least one of the parks, I know.
And did they, how about the airport?
Don't know that for sure.
Okay. So Pedestal Oil Company approached us, we didn't approach them, and asked if they would be able to, to drill oil immediately on the shores, the south shores of Lake Hefner. It's by a neighborhood that James and I share, Edgewater Lake Point. And this came up around the year 2000, and was, I believe, rejected by the Water Utilities Trust. One issue that former council member Guy Liebman, who was on the Water Utilities Trust, asked me to, to look into was that at that time, there was a question that the, the Hefner family, when they deeded this Hefner to the city, had as part of the deed that you couldn't engage in oil drilling in certain parts. He thought that was an issue that the Water Utilities Trust dealt with about 15 years ago. So I might ask that we?
We'd be happy to look into that. I don't recall that specifically, but we'd be happy to look into that.
So it was rejected at the time, I think, and then it, and then it came up again about three years ago. We had a public meeting, about 100 people came in protest, and it kind of fizzled out, and now, and now it's resurfaced in the last week, and there'll be a, a meeting this Thursday evening. The social media response has been overwhelming. Those who've signed up just on the Facebook event page, it's been about 350 people in the last 48 hours. I'm not sure how many people the Will Rogers Conservatory holds, but it is likely to be a standing-room-only, very well-attended meeting. And I would encourage everyone to attend that meeting, the more eyes and ears that hear the proposal from Pedestal Oil Company, which apparently involves a three-year lease, 21% royalty payments to the city, or to the Water Utilities Trust for recreational improvements at Lake Hefner, directional drilling and fracking, which, I don't necessarily remember that from three years ago, but apparently, that's part of the proposal. The, the response on social media has been overwhelmingly negative, and a lot of fear expressed about the city's water supply, about what it might mean to the neighborhoods. We've had some similar adverse impacts in other parts of the city, most recently 164th and MacArthur, from drilling rigs and impacts on neighborhoods. But I guess what, what I would hope that the Water Utilities Trust would consider is that if you have an overwhelming public response that would be willing to forego any recreational improvements, I understand that the, the reason to entertain it might be that you, you're able to take the money and make recreational investments. But if the overwhelming majority, if there's a clear public outcry that says, "We would forego these recreational investments in favor of not engaging in oil drilling on the southern shores of Lake Hefner," I would hope the Water Utility Trust would, would defer to that. My, my understanding is there's five voting members of the Water Utilities Trust, Councilman White, Jim Couch, Councilman Ryan, Cody Graves, and Carl Edwards. And I would, I would hope that there would be a, a significant hearing at the Water Utilities Trust as well. And I would hope that we could hear from scientists, maybe outside of the Pedestal Oil Company. I can't, I can't find a lot about the Pedestal Oil Company online. Mark Singer, who wrote Funny Money about the fall of Penn Square Bank, engaged in a lawsuit, and there's a lot in the Tulsa World about some of the business practices which are unfavorable. But that's about all I can find. There's no website presence, there's very little to help guide who it is exactly that would be engaged in oil drilling, horizontal drilling and fracking on the southern shores of Lake Hefner. of Lake Hefner. So I'd like to hear possibly from a scientist or somebody outside of the Pedestal Oil Company who might have conscious or subconscious bias because they have economic benefit from the decision, to talk about the science of what we're engaged in here, if there's any risk, and what the nature of that risk might be.
I'd like to ask the question because I've gotten several emails suggesting that people are opposed to fracking in Oklahoma City. And as I recall, there was no mention of fracking in official agreement. It was horizontal drilling, but there are different animals fracking in hydraulic and horizontal drilling.
The email that I received from the Utilities Director said directional drilling and fracking.
Well, I just talked to the director for our meeting today, and she said there was no mention of fracking. So I don't know whether that...
Well, that's an area that needs to be looked at.
I think it's important that the people who are protesting understand what they're protesting, and protest from definite knowledge, and bringing in a scientist might be the answer if we didn't bring in a person who had known bias against this proposal.
Sir, I can just make one point of clarification. As a voting member, I don't have an opinion on this yet. I don't have enough information to have an opinion on this at this point in time. I do want to set the record straight, though, that this, as Councilman G. pointed out, this was an unsolicited proposal, and I think it's a reasonable response by the Water Trust to go have a public meeting in regard to that proposal. But we also have to be clear on this, we have had directional drilling before that have gone under Lake Hefner. And so that's not the first time that that has been done in the past.
But there's lots of things we did in the past that we no longer engage in today because we've learned to do things. And since we engaged in drilling, we've also rejected some applications. And so I think that there's plenty of opportunity if we do want to make recreational improvements at Hefner. There are other funding mechanisms, like the upcoming general obligation bond, which I would imagine that taxpayers would vote overwhelmingly to do recreational improvements at Lake Hefner, which is beloved by tens of thousands, and used by tens of thousands of people. And so we're not dependent on this source of revenue to make recreational improvements at Lake Hefner. And so I would just encourage everyone to come, the Will Rogers Conservatory, Thursday night, 6:00 PM, and to hear the proposal and ask questions.
I think one of the positives is that we have a lot of, large group of people that are passionate about Lake Hefner, and I think that's clearly a very, very good thing.
You know, I think you're right, and what I think is also a major positive is, right or wrong, risk or no risk, people are understanding the importance of water, the importance that this is the most important commodity for the 21st century, and they want to protect it. Maybe there is no risk, but they're really talking about it in terms that elevate its rightful importance. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was going to mention the meeting as well. I'm looking forward to hearing what everybody has to say. Encourage everybody to come out. I hope it's a productive meeting. You know, sometimes meetings like this can get nonproductive quickly. And so I would like to stress that Pedestal is not the bad guy, you know, and so don't, I would encourage everybody to not treat them as such, and so... But I really want to hear everybody's thoughts, and I would like it to focus mainly on, is this a use that we want to see at Lake Hefner? And is this what Lake Hefner was intended to be? And so I hope that that's where the, most of the debate is, centers around, and drinking water and integrity of that, so.
Thank you. We really do have people that care so much about that lake. It's been evident for years with other kinds of development. So it's very interesting. Again, everybody do come to the meeting. If we can move on to our city manager reports, Mary Margaret Jones is here to do a presentation on our downtown park, which is always exciting.
It is exciting. Mary Margaret Jones is the primary planner on this park, and she's with Harv Graves &amp; Associates, a nationally known, Mary Margaret is nationally known, park planner.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Meg. So very happy to be here. And as this states, you can see that we're focusing now on the Upper Park. So you see that right away on the... Okay, now David told me, he said, "Now you know how this works." And I said, "Yes." What button on the right? You're just doing it? Okay. So this is our agenda. And without further ado, I'll take you through the project status and then go through our design studies today. So this is really an update. We want very much to keep you guys in the loop. We are basing this on, go ahead and go next one, David, on the work that you approved in the master plan, which you approved in January of 2014. But we are now in the preliminary final report, and we will soon be in final plans and specs. So we are in now the phase of making this real, and so it's a very exciting phase, and we want to keep you in the loop. Always remembering that everything we're doing, we're looking back to the public input. This was the questionnaire that we used for months and months of public input, and the next slide shows you the kinds of responses we got, and over 1,600 responses. And the thing that really amazed us at the time was the public, very clear message that they wanted this park to be about nature, and many other things as well, but the one that I think surprised us was how strong the desire was for nature trails, native landscapes, respite, shade, also events and performances, and bike paths, and picnics, and all of those kinds of things. But it was, really came through. Now, since that master plan, while we've been working, we have worked with all these groups. So we have been figuring out how to make the park work for festivals, how to make the park work for events, how it can work with all these other different initiatives and ongoing maps programs. So we have been really doing outreach and stakeholder, getting stakeholder input. So, now, that being said, while we are just furthering the master plan, we have also made a number of changes, revisions, improvements since the master plan, and these two side-by-side plans point out all of them. Some of them are fairly minor. I'd like to highlight four. Four are fairly significant. The first thing was the attention to the corner of the Boulevard and Robinson. And we've always called that our 100% corner, and you may have remembered, you may remember that's where we had a big civic fountain. The mayor always wanted to make sure we had something there that was sort of a marker, a beacon, and we were using the civic fountain to do that. Well, the more we got into it, and the more we got into how you would stage the stage at the oval, and set up the stage at the oval, the more it became clear that the fountain there just didn't really work. Wasn't enough space for it, and that what you really want there is a, is a big piece of sculpture. You want something permanent, that's lit, that's vibrant and lively. So we've moved the fountain, and we've moved the fountain down Robinson so that it brings activity to the heart of the park and makes a real announcement and gateway along Robinson. That's the first one. The second one is, we've paid more attention to the café's relationship to the Boulevard, and we've turned it so that it creates a Boulevard edge and an active edge at the Boulevard. And this will be good for the café and good for the park. Another one that we're really excited about is we've created a new feature in the park, which is a boathouse. And the boathouse on the lake is really cool, and it's going to be another center of activity more in the heart of the park, and I'll show you more detail on that. And then the fourth one is paying attention to that intersection of, if you will, I-40, the overpass over I-40 and Robinson, and making a place there. Where before we were talking about gardens, now we're talking about a major gathering place and a connection to the tunnel under Robinson, and a spill-out space for uses at Union Station. So that's, that gives you the sort of high level. And as you see in these two sketches, it's still the same idea, though. We've still got the big oval, we've still got the lake, we've still got the various features within the park, including the Woodland Gardens. Zeroing in a little bit, this shows you the idea of that sculpture at the corner of Robinson and Boulevard. Would that we could afford this Jonathan Borowski? Probably not, but something like that, that's very animated, colorful about people. You see the stage, you see the café, you see the lake and the boathouse, and the children's play area across from the fountain, and then Union Station. So really, a kind of fine tuning, which I'll take you through some of the visuals that explain those. A few facts, we always like to remember, come back to these. The Upper Park is 37 acres. We've created 15 unique areas. We were told over and over again, be sure you create destinations, be sure you create things to do. We're working with Marriott Gardens, and they're reminding us constantly of the things people want in Marriott Gardens, what they want more of, that we could satisfy in this park. We're expecting 560,000-plus visitors a year. I think it will be well in excess of that. That's the conservative outlook. And it'll be 55.6 million construction costs. And you see the breakdown of how much of it is soft, and that really is the response to the public input of make this a cool, shady respite from the urban environment. Okay, so now I'll take you through some of those views. So this is the café along the Boulevard Edge, and you see bocce ball, you see outdoor activities, you see the gardens, and then to the left, you see the oval, the oval green. But the café is as much about shade as it is about interior space. The next image shows you that, that sort of indoor/outdoor relationship that we're looking for. Right behind the viewer in this view is the hearth, which is a fireplace, an outdoor fireplace that will be on in the winter, and you see that in this view. So you see the fireplace, you see how at night the café is a real beacon, it's a portal to the park, and it will draw people in. You still have that fantastic view of the skyline from the oval and from the hill in the oval. Now, one change is we have added more trees around the edges of the oval, so there'll be more places to be in the shade and watch the activity. And we tested all those view corridors to make sure you can still see the stage, but you'll be in the shade. The fountain, it has moved now to the heart of the park along Robinson. We're able to make it as big as it wants to be and have adjacent lawn areas, because we've found in our other parks across the country that people like to sit on the lawn and watch their kids getting wet. And so it was important to find a place where we could give that. And here you see it along the promenade. So as you're coming down the promenade toward Skydance Bridge, you see the fountain on the left, and you see the open space and green spaces to the right, and the children's play is just to the right. So it's a perfect relationship between interactive fountain, children's play, and bathrooms. So this, this is the view looking back toward downtown, across a corner that became a whole new opportunity for us. By filling in that corner, raising that corner, we're able to make that area sort of more in plain, in the same plane as the, as the promenade up to Skydance Bridge. So you see the lake, and you see the various points of architecture, you see the café even sticking up with its hearth above the trees. So you see those destinations throughout the park. And then coming down to eye level, this is that same view, but more at eye level. This is, will be a great place for spill-out for weddings that we hope will take place in Union Station, and you can see the fountain, and you can see the lawn adjacent to the fountain, and you can see the lake. So this is really now a much more vibrant part of the park than we had envisioned it before. So we think these are all very improved, small changes. And we've been, we've been really trying to be real about really trying to be real. We've been trying to be very precise about the Woodland Gardens and what will grow in the Woodland Gardens, and how we can make them very healthy. And we've come up with an idea that makes them a series of destinations within the Woodland area, rather than saying the whole thing is a garden, which is probably unrealistic for maintenance. We have made each one a different destination. So the Woodland Gardens will have themes, and each of them will be a destination and a story to tell on an interpretive walk. And looking from the hill, over those Woodland Gardens, across the lake to the jewel, Union Station. And the new boathouse. So the idea of a boathouse on the lake, this is a place to get hot dogs and beer, hang out on Friday afternoon, be on the deck. What could go wrong? Beer and a lake, it'll be perfect. It really is a kind of more about the deck than anything else, and the hangout space, and a place to rent boats. So you see that view as you're hanging out on the deck, you see the view towards Skydance Bridge and Union Station, and a real active, vibrant center of the park that we hadn't really thought about in detail during the master plan. And then from Union Station itself, we hope very much that there'll end up being eating establishments in there, but nonetheless, we want to make the automobile turnaround in front of it into a pedestrian plaza and spill-out space from the beautiful arcade. So you can imagine a Sunday afternoon brunch here, and you see the lake in the background and the boats on the lake, and a very pastoral setting, a very traditional park setting. So just quickly, these slides show you how we're thinking about daily use, where the bathrooms are, where you can get food, where you can find shade, where you can get the amenities you need in a park on a daily basis. And then on a market day, how it sets up for markets, where the food carts can go. And then on function days, like wedding days, how you, how do you set it up for a big wedding, for instance? We've also done these same kind of studies for potential arts festival layouts and potential big performances, medium performances, and small performances. So we've been working with all the groups who staged those things to make sure they work in the park. Okay, so, a few details, we think this one is sort of fun. The fountain, the idea of the fountain is the blowing grasses of the prairies of the native grasslands of Oklahoma. So we've been looking to create that with water, and wands that will shoot the water up, so stainless steel wands that then shoot the water in these beautiful arcs. And you see details of those, some of them are short, and some of them are taller, and the ones that are taller, split, just like grasses do, and light will come out of those as well as water. You see that when all the water's on, the darker wedge shape is a sheet of water. So you know the Marriott Gardens, this thin sheet of water that kids love paddling about in, padding about in, that's what that is. And then you have the jets across the walk. When the winds pick up, the jets will turn off, and just the sheet of water will remain. And then when you want to put a tent where that sheet of water is during the Arts Festival, for instance, you turn that off as well. So it's very multi-use, and can be used in a variety of ways. And these are some precedent examples of both the arcs of water and the stainless steel tubes from which they will emit. We also have spent a lot of time looking at the playground in the Woodland Gardens along Robinson, near the interactive fountain, so it's a perfect sort of triad. And there's a shade structure with bathrooms and offices for the park employees. It's important that play areas are broken down into age groups, so we've done that. That's part of the rules and regs nowadays with play areas. So they interact, but they're also distinct, so that moms and dads know, and grandmas and caregivers know which area their kids are meant to be in. And then we make them fun, and we make them destinations. You've got your ramble bank, your swing valley, your web valley, your spinner valley, so that there's topography and there's things to do. Water course, you can turn on the water, you can turn off the water, you can, you can build stuff in sand, for instance. And this shows you a cross-section of the shade structure and some of those elements and some of that topography. We've been continuing to work on the Boulevard. This is just to show you that, the café and the relationship to the Boulevard edge, and the input we'll be hoping to give to the, to the team working on the Boulevard when they're ready. And this is just, this is a lot of rendering so much as a 3D model, that we wanted to show you, imagine the hotels on your left, future retail on your right, you're coming down what was formerly known as Harvey's Vine, and you're, and you're approaching the park. And this is to show how the café sets up along the Boulevard as a portal and a gateway to the park. And on Robinson, this is at the corner of Robinson and the Boulevard, where we think the major piece of sculpture should go. Then moving down Robinson, that's the food truck court, that's the food truck plaza where all the food trucks can pull up along Robinson, and you can sit on a plaza in the shade and have lunch. And then continuing down, this is adjacent to the fountain on Robinson. And then continuing all the way down, this is the transition from the gardens and the Skydance Bridge access ramp down to the underpass that goes under Robinson that links to that future development parcel on the other side of Robinson. At the, at this corner with the sculpture, we think there should also be sculptural benches, custom benches here. So a major piece of sculpture, but also places to sit that are playful, whimsical, whimsical and sculptural, like you see here. And like you see in the next slide as well. These, again, are just mock-ups because we're in progress, we're giving you a progress debriefing. These are some examples of ones we've built in other places that are the similar ideas. And then finally, we can't forget the dogs. And this is something Marriott Gardens wishes they had bigger of, so we will have one in the Woodland Gardens on the Hudson Street side, hopefully responding to the future residential communities that will be all along Hudson. And then finally, I think this is finally, the bridge over the lake, and looking to make that beautiful and warm with wood on the inside, a steel structure on the outside, so very appropriate for Oklahoma, yet comfortable and inviting as a destination to cross that lake. So that takes us to our next steps. We are continuing to work with stakeholders. We're getting more and more into planting. We want to make sure the plants grow and are happy, and we're working with Marriott Gardens on this, and a whole panel of experts. Shade is really important. We're doing our cost estimating as we go, so we're doing it every step of the way to make sure we're in budget. And we will finish our preliminary design report in February 2015 and come back to you for approval at that time. Thank you.
Wow. So it is becoming real.
It is becoming real.
Your comments are amazing, those graphics are just fabulous. Comments and questions from council?
I think it's an excellent addition, Council. It's, it's filled a gap for some of the things that Marriott is too small for. Pretty nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
David? Any comments or questions? It's really a wonderful presentation.
Great.
So interesting to see how the input from all these stakeholders has helped it develop into something that really seems so active and a real complement to what we, what we currently have. And we see how people are using that front lawn to downtown right now, and it's just, makes me want to be able to wiggle my nose and have it all be here at once. It's going to take a while for it to look like it does, and I think everybody's going to have to be patient and... to have to be patient and understand that gardens and trees and things
Exactly.
Take time to mature, but it's incredible work and we appreciate so much
Great.
What Hard Raze has done to help us.
Thank you.
Can we give another report?
We do. Ian Gogan is here to talk to us a little bit about 108 loans. There were some questions from council a few weeks ago about exactly how that process works and I was asked to bring back a report on 108 loans. Ian?
Good morning, everybody. I am going to give a brief summary of the city manager report that was distributed to you all and then I'll be available to answer any questions you have. So Section 108 is the loan guarantee portion of the federal government's Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program. In essence, it is a mechanism that allows the city or other cities with CDBG to secure long-term financing for different types of projects and expand the amount of, the ability of CDBG to be used for those projects beyond the annual allocation. It uses the CDBG funds, annual funds for collateral on that financing. The cities are allowed to secure five times the amount of their CDBG allocation for qualified community development projects. The program supplies public financing for projects that primarily provide a public benefit to low and moderate income persons. Because it's CDBG based, it must follow the national objectives for those funds, which are principally benefiting low, moderate income persons, assisting in the elimination and prevention of slum and blight, or meeting a community development urgent need, which is typically related to disasters. The most common use across the country is for economic development projects, although it can also be used for public facility and housing projects. We also use 108 primarily for economic development projects as an extension of other funding we have. So when you use it for economic development, you typically tie that to job creation for low or moderate income persons. Some 108 funds in the past have been used as grants in addition to loans. There's no typically, there's not typically a pool of applicants for 108. The 108 program is a very rigorous process to go through. It has a lot of the, or all the federal requirements in terms of meeting Davis Bacon and other requirements, so it's a rigorous process. It doesn't typically have a lot of applicants. So we don't always have a pool of ready to go, waiting for the funds. It's typically on a as-you-need basis and we evaluate applications and requests for that financing on a as-you-go basis. There's a preference for supporting revenue generating activities because this is a loan that is provided to the city by HUD. We basically put that downstream to the user of the loan and we want repayment on that loan so we don't have to use our CDBG to pay back the principal or interest on the loan. As I said, financing is via loan by HUD. So HUD works with Bank of New York Mellon. The city receives the loan. We then give that to the applicant and the applicant is typically required, the user of the loan, to pay back a certain amount back to the city and back to HUD to secure that loan. The HUD guarantees that loan, which is HUD's proportion of that, provides both financing for securities and credit enhancement. Next. So loans, terms of structure, how these loans or grants are typically used. So one of the major advantages of the 108 program is it provides below-market financing to projects. So there's an interest rate well below the market. It's basically where the HUD guarantee comes in to secure the financing. There's payment back based on whatever terms we impose. Usually there's principal plus a little bit of interest and there's various types of interest we can put on that loan depending on the project and how we evaluate that project. If it's for an economic development project, for job creation, it's about $35,000 to $50,000 per new job. That's a requirement. So in certain designated areas, you can be qualified for up to $50,000 per job, but in a lot of other areas, it's only 35. Amortization is 20 years, or the term is 20 years. You can amortize differently within that term. And then the loan note is sold by HUD to investors with a payment guaranteed by collateral. Examples of past use, Skirvin Hotel, 4.8 million, Dell, 4.7 million, Climate Craft, Leek for the Blind, Gold Dome. You'll see some of these are grants, some of these are loans. So if we provide a loan to a user, we typically require payment so we, on that loan, principal and interest, so that we're not using our CDBG funds. Occasionally in the past with grants, we have used the program as a grant with which we would then pay back the principal and interest using our CDBG funds. Current capacity, so if we used our annual CDBG allocation, this is assuming that level does not change, if you multiply by five, it's about $22 million of capacity that we currently have. We have 3.175 million currently outstanding from a $4 million revolving loan fund. So at this moment right now, 18.6 million. And then HUD is currently reviewing the 6.9 million loan that was approved for the 21C project. So if you take that out, after, if that's approved, we'll have 11.8 million roughly in remaining capacity from the 108 program. And briefly, I wanted to touch about current practices that we use to reduce risk when we use this program because we are on the hook with our own CDBG funds and those are precious resources to use for community development. There's strong underwriting by city staff and HUD. This is often gap financing. It requires a lot of other financing tools to be in place before we can give the 108 out, so it's not a primary loan. There's underwriting by both the city and HUDs. There's multiple levels of underwriting. 21C is a good example where we conducted our underwriting and that is now in the HUD office to review. We often increase interest rates beyond the minimum to support loan management, so we're only required to pass through the small amount of interest that is put on the loans, but we can increase that if we see a fair amount of risk in terms of providing the loan. And it's still usually well below market rate, but that creates a reserve in addition to the CDBG that we can use and tap if something goes wrong. When possible, shorter terms are used to decrease city obligation. 20-year amortization is not always the status quo. 21C is a good example where there's a seven-year period put in to relate to the new markets' tax credits they're using. And after that certain amount of time, they're required to refinance or do something else with the funding. So the more we can reduce the term, we don't have as much of our capacity outstanding. Loans restricted to projects that generate revenue. We want the users of the financing to pay back the loan and not have us use the CDBG, only use for gap funding, and then they have to be fully collateralized. So beyond the CDBG, we require collateral on top of that, again, to protect our CDBG funds. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
That was a, that was a great summary. What, I guess the first question would be, what happened with the Gold Dome million-dollar loan?
It's a good question. I'm not sure I can provide all the answers because I was not around. My understanding is that the person who took the loan got into financial trouble themselves through personal issues and they were therefore unable to repay the loan.
So then what happens to our, so did we lose allocation or what happened? What's the consequence of that?
I believe we had to, yeah, we had to make the loan payment. So basically what happens when the loan goes bad is we have to provide the principal, which is our collateral, CDBG.
So we lost CDBG funds?
Yes, we had to use a portion of CDBG. We were on the hook basically to repay the loan.
Wow, okay.
And Ian, just to clarify, that was the previous owner of the Gold Dome?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, this was Dr. Williams.
Right.
Situation, yeah, there was a new owner.
But I guess, I guess that goes to the risk that, I mean, these are, CDBG funds are the, really the principal way that we engage in public assistance, housing, I mean, programs for the poor. So to lose a million dollars stings, to say the least. What, I guess one question, now this was cited in the Convention Center Hotel PowerPoint. They put this up as a possible funding mechanism. And then, and you outlined three, that Section 108 loans have to meet one of CDBG's three national objectives. So it would be to benefit low and moderate income persons, to assist in the elimination or prevention of slum and blight and for natural disasters. So for the 21C, we cited this slum and blight condition.
I believe it was low, moderate income because what happens is that they identify the amount of employees that are being generated and their income qualifies as low to moderate persons. So if, if, if funding were considered for the hotel, it'd be the same deal. It was same with Dell. So the amount of employees that meet low and moderate requirements meets that national objective.
So the creation of
Creation.
Low-paying jobs.
Correct.
That's interesting. Okay, so the creation. What could you say? That wouldn't, it wouldn't have applied for slum and blight either because it did.
It may have. I don't, I'm pretty sure the low and moderate income portion was used for Dell, but slum and blight may have also been a secondary consideration.
But for the Convention Center Hotel, it wouldn't be slum and blight, it would be that you're, yeah.
I was talking about 21C, sorry.
Right, right. So going forward, the Convention Center Hotel, it wouldn't be slum and blight, it would be that you're creating low-paying jobs?
Jobs that support low and moderate households, yes, if it were used as part of that.
Okay. What could you say, Ian, about other cities' practices? I mean, this is used in cities throughout the country that, where would we be in terms of our appetite for risk or how, I think, I forgot how you said it, but how you protect against?
There's a wide range of use of 108. I would say we fall in the conservative side for our use of 108. I know, you know, other cities have been very aggressive and almost passed through the entire amount of financing to uses, relying upon CDBG to back it up. That's certainly something that is similar to actually some of the projects we've done in the past with our grant and we've decided that that was what we'd wanted to do and we haven't done a grant in quite some time. I know other cities that packaged it up into a large loan pool so that they've used their capacity for an extensive amount of financing for all sorts of different projects, but also require that different financing, you know, that those projects must pay a certain return. My, my personal experience has been only on the 21C deal. You know, I can have Steve Rhodes or others talk to past deals, but the way that, you know, I talk with staff and we evaluate these deals, I'd say is very conservative and very risk adverse to the extent possible. You know, we also, we want to provide the financing, we also want to protect our CDBG to a greater extent. And that was a big issue when talking about the financing towards the 21C.
Is it possible, let's say that, so you lose, the Gold Dome, you lose that, so you, you're, you have to spend a million of CDBG funds to repay. Is it possible to pay that from the general fund or from other source of the city so that you don't lose?
Could be, money's fungible.
So you can, you're not, you don't automatically lose a million dollars of CDBG funds. You could replace that with the?
The CDBG is the collateral. You can use anything to repay. You're basically just using that as collateral to make the principal payments, principal and interest payments. It can be repaid through other sources.
And Ian, I think I recall from my experience serving on that committee that you don't have to repay it at one time.
No.
There's a long timeframe in order to repay that, so.
It's the annual debt service and interest, total debt service, and so it's several hundred thousand dollars as opposed to millions of dollars at any given time.
So could you take the 20 years to pay it back?
You could, or you could advance it. I mean, it's just like paying back a loan. So the, our CDBG is the collateral and if you don't want to use other funds to pay back a loan that didn't work, you have the CDBG. That's what HUD will use as the backstop, but there are all sorts of other ways to do that.
So on the 21C, it was a seven-year note, and then what happens at the seven-year mark?
So the, basically what happens after seven years is they either refinance, so there might be, they might choose to do a balloon payment because seven years is the new markets' term. So they might buy the loan out or what's built in is their interest rate actually goes up. So it's low for the initial period, the new markets' period, but if they choose to stick with a 20-year term, the interest rate jumps so that there's return basically on our risk for keeping our capacity out for such a long period of time.
How high does it jump?
I think it rises, I mean, it's in the 3% to 4% range above one, basically it's LIBOR plus 120 basis points. And then it rises much higher than that on a graduating scale, if I recall.
Great, thank you very much.
Quick question. How are we doing for us the Section 3 requirement of our HUD dollars?
How are we doing? I probably would have to research that and get back to you. I can't speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. You said you were using the CDBG money for collateral?
Yes.
Has there ever been a loan where we've taken some additional collateral from the borrower?
Yeah, on HUD uses CDBG as collateral. We and HUD typically require collateral on top of that. 21C, for example, they're using their FFNE as additional collateral on top of the loan. So it's our CDBG, but then we required about $7 million worth of collateral on their FFNE on our part and HUD often requires collateral of that scale on top of that. So it's not just the CDBG.
Do we have some kind of collateral on the Gold Dome loan?
I'm not sure. Do we have collateral on that?
Yeah, we had, or we had some fallback positions, but we, when it transpired, there wasn't anything left for us to go after.
Yeah. It's rare not to have collateral. It's required by HUD. So even if we didn't want to and wanted to be more, you know, forthcoming with a loan and a deal, HUD will actually require us or themselves to have additional collateral.
Maybe periodically we ought to review our collateral to make sure it's still adequate to cover the loan we've got. Because I've seen some instances in the banking business where they took collateral at the beginning of the loan and by the time the loan went bad, collateral had decreased the value of the asset, couldn't pay off of it.
Ian, what's? I think I heard that's what that little extra interest rate will allow us to do is more careful monitoring of and management of the loans and collateral.
Depreciation is one of the reasons we like to keep shorter loan terms and if they're using things like FFNE, that is an issue when we talk about collateral. Furniture, fixings, and equipment.
Okay.
So the materials put into the hotel have a value.
Okay.
Ian, thank you. That was a terrific presentation.
Okay.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you very much.
City manager?
That is all.
Claims and payroll only?
We do.
Great. So we have citizens to be heard before we head to executive session. And Mr. Gonzalez, as you come forward, we'll need your name and address for the record,
William Gonzalez, 801 Caroline Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. I have some pictures and paperwork here to give to the council for them to look at.
All righty. If you'll hand that to Mickey, please, she'll make sure that we get those.
I'll be brief here. I brought to complaint a couple months back on code enforcement, nothing was done. In fact, I met with David Adcock last week and voiced my concern on the lack of code enforcement on the installation in my personal house. And his statement was, they had no means to test or judge the amount of insulation that's put in an attic. I said, basically all you're doing is, when you do your code inspection, is that there is insulation? He goes, yes, we don't know how much or anything else, we just know that there's insulation. I said, okay. So I called Jerry King last week, two weeks ago, and I asked him about the concerns I had on some condensing units which were put in on Mustang Road there. And his statement was, he personally went out and looked at them, couldn't see nothing wrong. The facts are, the pictures I show you there, that they were, that they're not installed according to the manufacturer's installation instructions. He says, what are you doing inspecting anyways? He goes, you know, it's the $2,500 fine for being, posing as an inspector. I said, I've never posed as an inspector. It'd be the same thing as if I went out and showed the police officer somebody criminal doing some wrongdoing. I'm a policeman, I'm not doing police work, I'm just showing what's done. My other thing was, several months ago, I brought it in here that I believe there was dirty cops on this police force at Hefner Station. And one of the cops' name is Brian Poole. And city manager said, talked to chief city out here, and I talked to chief city, told him about the officer taking stuff, money, and what he thought was drugs out of the glove box of my son and putting it in his pocket, my son's pocket, said, it's still in your possession. possession. Chief City goes, that's your son's opinion. That's his statement. The cop next to him said, no, that's exactly what happened. He goes, well, 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 he backed up on it. So, he backtracked on that. The facts are that what he did was wrong. The city did nothing about it. City manager asked me if I had not got satisfaction from Chief City to come talk to him. The only satisfaction I got from talking to the city manager, I got to talk to former Chief Barry, and he agreed with me that arresting my son for carrying a firearm while intoxicated was a bad call. He said, it did not stand up to what he thought was good. Nobody's doing anything. My personal opinion, Chief City is a dirty cop, and this place is dirty if they don't allow him to be checked.
Sir, thank you for coming down. Appreciate your comments. I believe we have executive session.
All righty, we have returned from executive session and we'll need to vote on item 9 N1, which is a resolution authorizing the municipal councillor to join in the filing of an amicus brief.
(Laughter)
Thank you, that's your vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.